Good morning. This is Monday, June 6th, our Moore County Board of Education work session. I want to call our meeting to order. Is there a motion for closed session?
Madam Chair, I move the board into closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential student record information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a1, General Statute 115c-402, and 20 U.S.C. 1232g, and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a3.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We'll go into our conference room.
We adjourn.
And it's meeting.
Right.
We'll call our meeting back to order. Is there a motion to approve agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Dennison, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we'll take a moment of silence. Before we get started, I just want to acknowledge that our board colleague Stacy Colwell is on line. Hi Stacy.
Hello.
And she will be attending our meeting remotely today. We're getting into our first item of board action, which is our COVID-19 management update. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you madam chair. Good morning board members again. As Dr. Powers is coming forward to give us a brief update, a COVID-19 management update, which we've come very accustomed to. And also as a result of Senate Bill 654, the board each month has to take a vote on masking. And this is the last month that that's required per Senate Bill 654. So this may be the last COVID-19 management update that we see at a work session. We may have another one as we open up the school year, just to brief you where we are. But just wanted to point that out. There hasn't been a lot of changes in any regulations from the Department of Health and Human Services, but Dr. Metcalf will give us a quick overview of our historical data. And then our recommendation remains optional masking for the rest of the school year, which is a couple more days in our activities through the summer. Dr. Metcalf.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. We will turn things right over to Dr. Powers. Dr. Powers.
Thank you. Yeah, as Dr. Locklear shared, really no new information to share with you. Everything remains the same as it has been over the past several months related to guidance from DHHS, our local Moore County Health Department, just recommends continuation of what we've had in place. So just a reminder, a couple of metrics that we look at, the new COVID-19 community levels. You can see over the past number of weeks, since the week of April 25th up through last week, the week of May 23rd, week before last, community levels in Moore County related to hospitalizations have remained in the green, which is low. Of course, there has been an uptick, you know, across the state over the past month or so. But again, there are some counties that are moving into the yellow, one that's into the red, related to the community levels. But Moore County again remains in the low level. The transmission and percent positivity rates, that index, just a reminder of what that looks like in terms of the different levels and color coding there. And then if you look at where we stand, you know, we were at a point there for a while where we were in the yellow. But with the uptick, we can see over the last several weeks where we stand as a county, the county of Moore at this point. So we are back up to 128 cases per 100,000 and a 21.7% positivity rate, which puts us in the high transmission category. Looking at our student data, even with that, you know, again, we've seen some upticks. However, you know, the numbers are not, you know, certainly not outrageous as what we had seen back earlier in the year. So for the week of the 23rd, for example, we had 25 new student infections resulting in 93 absences as a result of those infections. Certainly something that can be managed. And that brings us to our final recommendation. So as of today, we would recommend that we continue optional masking as we have done in the past at all, for students and staff at all schools, district sites indoors, all indoor athletic and extracurricular activities, as well as on all school buses and activity bus transportation. And we would propose that masking remain optional through our summer programs and activities based on where we are at this point.
Board members.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second. Are there any comments at this time? The good news is that this is our last month of having to revisit masking. So don't anticipate it coming before us for months to come. Ms.
Just for the record, I'm unclear as to what the motion is because all I heard was so moved.
So moved on the superintendent's recommendation of continuing with mask options.
As stated by.
As stated by Dr. Powers and Dr. Locklear. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we are going to, thank you, Dr. Powers. Next, we're going to move into our board action item of review of our RFPs that we receive for our legal service. And board colleagues, we had sent some information to you so that you would have time that was included with our agenda of the actual RFPs that we received, which were three of those. We received RFPs from Sync Law Firm, DeBraut Law Firm, as well as Schwartz Law Firm. And since our last meeting, the process and the thought was for a subgroup of board members and Dr. Locklear to follow up with each firm, to have interviews, as well as the firms to meet with our superintendent and his senior staff. After the meeting with all three firms, the recommendation is to move forward with negotiating a contract with Schwartz Law Firm. And at this time, I will ask my board colleagues, I'll begin with Libby and then Bob, if you will comment on some of the things that you felt in proceeding with Schwartz Law Firm came up during our interview.
Thank you. Yes, we had very good interviews with all three of the law firms that applied. I think we unanimously felt that Schwartz Law Firm would give us the most complete and comprehensive coverage of school board issues, especially those dealing with exceptional children and employee contractual law. They seem to be the most knowledgeable and with the ability to keep almost all of our issues in-house rather than having to farm them out to someone else. And for that reason, if nothing else, they stood above the others. They also bring in a lot of experience and this was noted, Mr. Schwartz was the legal representative for the Moore County Schools from about 1991 to 2002, I think is what he told us. So he is very knowledgeable about our school system and issues that have occurred here before. But in the meantime, while he's worked with other school systems and maintained his expertise in school law. So I felt like we could bring a very good solid representation or recommendation for Schwartz Law. Mr. Levy?
Mr.
Yeah, they're really.
Right here.
Okay, there really wasn't that much of a contest. The Schwartz Law Firm had a lawyer there who knew educational law. He just did and recited a brief on a particular case called the Grimm case, which is really, I think, crucial in terms of dealing with some of the modern issues that we have. Not that he was in favor or against anything, but he just knew it and he knew it cold. The other two law firms, one was basically a municipal law firm. And while they represent a lot of the municipalities around this area, they really are not ready to be doing our specialty of what we do in educational law. And Sync Law Firm, which I believe are two, it consists of two very, very good people and very knowledgeable people, they just were not up to that level that Schwartz Law Firm was. So it was really not much of a, it was just not much of a contest in terms of making decision. So long as, and there are a couple of good things about this. The Schwartz Law Firm is going to give us some seminars as part of our retainer. And is also going to give us a blanket retainer for doing things like coming to our board meetings and the like and doing things like, I believe if I read it correctly, Dr. Locklear, short telephone conversations and things like that. So overall, they were ready to do our kind of laws. That's the reason why I would recommend it.
And in addition, we noted that Schwartz already are representing several school systems across the state. And as Libby noted, they were here with Moore County up through Dr. Susan Purser's time is when their service was discontinued here. Dr. Locklear, do you have any additional comments from you or your team of what you felt with your interviews?
No ma'am, just to echo what the board has said, I think our team as well felt like Mr. Schwartz and his firm brought the best overall services for our school district. So would also echo our appreciation to the other firms and appreciated them and their services that they bring. But our team was also unanimous, if you will, that Mr. Schwartz and his firm would be the best possible course.
At this time, one of the additional comments that I will make is, is Schwartz Law Firm will be working with Tharrington and Smith. As we transition, Tharrington and Smith will continue to work on outstanding cases to make sure those are closed appropriately as we get set for Schwartz Law Firm to be onboarded. So at this time, I will entertain a motion, or before I get to the motion, let me have Dr. Locklear talk about salary and your discussion with Schwartz, so we know whether or not we need to table and talk about negotiating. Give us an update.
Yes ma'am, I had some discussions with Mr. Schwartz in reference to the contract to present to the board. And so there's three options that are linked to the executive summary. There are two retainer options. There's a retainer option that would begin immediately today if the board approved that. And that would be a retainer of $5,000. It comes with a reduced hourly rate for any services that are done within that contract as a result of being on retainer. And also the first thousand dollars of services to board policy would be covered through the retainer. Board meetings would be covered through the retainer. Regular business board meetings would be covered through the retainer, as well as six workshops, half-day workshops would be covered through that retainer. There's also a second retainer proposal that would begin July 1, with a reduced hourly rate for any transition services that are required during June as Schwartz Law takes over transitions with Tharrington and Smith. The third proposal is just a non-retainer proposal, and that of course comes with a much higher hourly rate. And it's basically an hourly rate contract. Both of these for Mr. Schwartz are two-year proposals. But of course, the board always retains the right to request other proposals for legal services down the road if the board feels like they need to do that. But both of these are two-year proposals. So those are the three for the board's consideration. I would say that from my review, and from my review of what our average cost of legal services with Tharrington and Smith, somewhere between 20,000 on the low side per month to 27 on the high side per month, depending on which month you're looking at, the retainer agreement that begins in July may be the best option for the board from my review of that. But I'd certainly present that to the board for your consideration and take your direction.
Board members, do you have any comments, questions, Mr.?
Yeah, I just said, all three that we received start June the 6th and go through 2024.
That's correct. The second retainer agreement, and we can pull that up.
I was going to ask if he would pull that up so we could look at it.
There should be a second retainer agreement that the retainer itself will not be charged in July 1st, but there'll be a reduced hourly rate.
Can you make that larger there Charlie, so I can see which one it is?
This is the one that begins on June the 6th?
Correct.
All of them begin June the 6th, I mean.
Well, there is one that begins July 1st.
I don't have one to begin July 1st.
Right, right, right. That one is pulled up there.
Go back to, Charlie, go back to the one you just pulled up.
The ones that are, none of us are all July, are all June the 6th.
Click on the other retainer agreement, please Charlie. You go down into the paragraph.
Paragraph two.
The second paragraph from the period.
Paragraph two talks about from June 6th to June 30th, there'll be no retainer fee and all legal services will be billed in quarter hour increments, the rate of 255. For partners, 180 for associates and 115 for paralegals. This is the second retainer agreement where the board will not be charged the retainer fee for June, would only be charged for hourly charges in the transition. And then beginning on July 1, the board would begin to be charged retainer agreement. The other retainer agreement starts charging the retainer beginning today if the board approved that contract. Based on my review, I believe this would be the one I would recommend. But of course, open to anything the board directs us to go back with the firm to discuss.
What do you mean? You prefer the one that starts today?
I prefer the one that retainer starts July 1 and we just pay for hourly services with the transition because I don't believe we may get our value out of the retainer in June with the transition. That it may be best to just look, because you're looking at about 20 hours of service. That would equal that out. So in my thought, review with this, paying hourly services through the month of June and then beginning the retainer services in July might best serve the board.
I would so move to adopt it. That's your opinion.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Board members, do you have additional comments or questions?
I just have a question. So, Dr. Locklear, so the agreement that began, the agreement that would begin June 6th and the one that began after July, they're the same. They just have different start dates, is that correct?
Yes sir, this agreement begins our services with Schwartz Law Firm beginning today if the board approves it. The retainer however, begins July 1. So that's all written in this agreement that will begin to have their services today. And the advantage of that obviously is the transition, that we have that overlap with Schwartz and Tharrington and Smith.
So how much would it cost us in June with Schwartz?
It's really unknown, but if.
There's no flat fee or anything like that?
There is no, it would be an hourly charge.
Hourly charge.
And the retainer would, the retainer, paying up to the retainer $5,000, that's almost 20 hours of service. So the estimate is that we'd be able to maybe be charged less than a retainer fee for the month of June until we start moving into them full-time.
Now, what's their feeling on how much they're charging when they're getting information from Tharrington and Smith? I mean, I don't feel we should have to pay them to get information, you know, for, to get them information from Tharrington and Smith.
I'd have to ask that question specifically to Mr. Schwartz. But Tharrington and Smith is committed to making sure they get the information, making sure they get it in such a way. I think they talked about with cover sheets and information on each case. And then there are cases that it's better, or situations that is better that Tharrington and Smith brings that across the finish line. That's what we'll all be discussing with Tharrington and with Schwartz.
Okay, and I would like to know specifically, don't have to know before we approve it, but specifically what cases are pending now that Tharrington and Smith is going to be handling.
We get that information and get it to board members, just so everyone is aware of what we have outstanding. Charlie, please, if you would go down to the section two, number two, and blow that up just a little bit more. Board members, this is the section that I want to make sure everybody is aware that the, what the hourly fee will be, it will begin, our contract will begin today with approval. And the only difference is, is that we will not have the $5,000 retainer fee for June. It will begin in July.
But we'll also not have Schwartz at our next meeting on the 13th.
Correct.
Correct.
But we are going to still have Tharrington and Smith for that reason.
Correct.
So we want to be careful not to be paying two lawyers, you know, at once, which I think is a good thing for your suggestion.
And going forward, obviously from today, Schwartz will be in the loop with anything that comes up, but they will begin to work with Tharrington to bring closure as best as possible.
And I just had another question. What lobbying services has Tharrington and Smith been providing for us? What are their lobbying services?
I'm not aware of any specific lobbying they've done. Tharrington and Smith has always advised the board on bills that are entering the General Assembly, on the impact of those bills, and advised staff on that. So that would be the expectation, I'm sure, from Schwartz Law Firm as well. Additionally, if the board so chose to ask for help and assistance from Schwartz Law Firm, I'm sure they could offer specific services if so asked to do so.
But the information we're getting now is not really lobbying, it's just information on what the.
Yes sir, that would be my understanding.
Any additional questions, comments? Stacy, are you okay? Do you have any comments, questions?
Yes ma'am, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, all in favor of our motion to proceed with Schwartz with the contract that they have provided for the retainer to begin in July, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next, we will move down to our pending action and discussion items, and we have several of those. So we want to try to get through these as best as we can in a timely manner. I know we've got some hard stops just a bit before 12. So Dr. Locklear, we'll begin with our first item of academically and/or intellectually gifted plan for 2223.
Yes ma'am. This is, first, I want to say thank you. We had a couple of board members who consulted with Ms. Fay and Ms. Gephardt and Dr. Metcalf on our AIG plan to discuss that. Board member Levy, Vice Chair Carter, appreciate your consultation on that and certainly give you the opportunity to say anything you'd like to say. But we are required to submit a revised plan. And this is, you know, every three years, we're required to submit this. And so we're lucky to have the expertise we have in our district with Ms. Gephardt and Ms. Fay. And I'll turn it, before I turn it over to Dr. Metcalf and team, I'll see if Ms. Carter or Mr. Levy have any comments related to the plan. Again, thank you for your willingness to consult and give some feedback.
Yeah, the one thing that I did like about the plan is that it's basically merit-based and that it is not woke or equity-based. There is some language in there that we, I believe. Did we make that change, by the way?
I'm sure they will.
They did.
We did, okay. Because we want to emphasize equality as opposed to some things that say other school districts, Fairfax County and places like that, are emphasizing. The whole idea is to bring everyone up. And one of the things that I did like about the plan is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we are screening all students at, was it either second or third grade?
Second and sixth.
In second grade for AIG. And that is quite important. So that we can get the kids early enough that they're not socially discouraged from excellence. Because starting at about second grade, they're still gung ho for excellence and they'll give us good testing. And we can find out, you know, who is likely to succeed in the program. One of the things that I did learn, which I think is important, and maybe I knew it, but I just was kind of emphasized, that these are special needs children. And it is a special needs program. But these are important special needs programs for children who are in many ways challenged by their own intellect. And our job is to send them as far and as high and as fast as we humanly can and to do it based on their merit. So I think overall, it's a pretty good plan.
Well, I'll just echo that. I think it's a very good plan and I appreciate the fact that we have such knowledgeable folks working here in Moore County to put it all together. Very, very comprehensive. And as Mr. Levy said, the fact that every child in Moore County will be tested to see if they meet the criteria to fall into this program, so that they might be further challenged. There's nothing worse than a bright child being bored. So thank you.
Dr. Metcalf.
Yes, well, we greatly appreciate Ms. Carter and Mr. Levy's input and feedback. And we did take that into consideration, made some changes based on that. We not only need to submit the plan, we also need to get board approval before we. We not only need to submit the plan, we also need to get board approval before we can do that. So that is why we're here today, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have about the plan.
Thank you. Mr. Dennison?
How often are the kids checked for AIG?
So we mass screen our students in second grade, sorry. We screen every student in second grade and sixth grade across the county, but then we also test, anytime a parent or a teacher or a student asks, we look at their data and make sure there's evidence there to indicate a need, and then we'll test if we see it.
Okay, the reason I ask that question, we all know that our students do not have equal opportunity when they start out of school. And probably through sixth grade, that's true. So I just want to make sure that when our, the effort our teachers make to get our kids up to speed...
Absolutely. It's one reason why we do an elementary and a middle.
You know, we cannot, they're not, they do not have equal opportunity when they're, at least through third grade, they're just not there. So, thank you.
One additional comment. I know part of our discussion was over the difficulty in getting AIG certified teachers. And I do hope, and I know Mr. Levy and I agreed on this, that we will continue to encourage our in-house teachers to get that certification if possible, such that we might have more on board who will be knowledgeable of it. And I guess the only, the only negative of this whole program I see is the fact that we can't have more offerings for our AIG students. We, I think, guarantee 45 minutes a week, is, I believe is what it was.
Correct.
And it's a shame we can't do more. Obviously, you've got to have the certified teachers to do it, which means additional teachers and additional certifications. So I hope we'll continue to push along that way.
And I do want to emphasize one of the things that you just said, and that is that not only can teachers suggest that a child be tested for AIG, but parents can do that, friends can do that, acquaintances can do that, so that whatever the child's support group is can push him in that direction or her in that direction. So it's, it's not just a closed system where if the teacher, if you're cut up or something like that, and the teacher just doesn't take much of an interest in you, you don't get to be tested. So everyone's tested in second grade, and I believe it can be done once every 18 months, am I correct on that?
Correct.
So that's also important for Mr. Dennison's question, as kids grow and, you know, and as they become socially different and maybe are much more motivated.
Any other comments?
I have another one.
Okay.
And I agree that the academically, academic program is short-changed, but no more than our economically disadvantaged students are short-changed. So I don't want the public to think that we're short-changing the AIG and not the others, because the others are probably more disadvantaged than, because of the services we cannot afford to offer because of the funding we're getting from the state.
Any other comments? Dr. Locklear, any additional comments from you?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Certainly because of my recommendation to approve the plan.
Okay. Thank you so much, your team for coming. This has been extremely helpful, and Bob and Levy, we appreciate your assistance in helping the committee and providing feedback at a board level.
We appreciate, we appreciate the staff, I think it was, was it four hours or something like that, that we spent going through this entire thing and especially answering our questions, because I learned quite a lot. So I want to say that I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If any other board member would like to have a hard copy of the whole plan to look at before next week, I'm happy to pass this one on.
Thank you.
It is the rough draft, but...
And by the way, while other districts are short-changing their AIG programs, we are strengthening ours. And I think that that's a credit to Moore County schools.
Thank you. We'll get, we'll move into our next item, which is alternative accountability model participation for our Pinney CLC.
We don't have, we don't approve that?
No, we are, it's pending for next month.
Okay, all right, all right, that's fine.
And we'll do consent.
All right.
Thank you.
Dr. Locklear?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. This is an item that we're required per general statute and per policy from the State Department to bring to you each year to approve the model we use for state accountability for our alternative school. This is a bit of a routine matter, but we're bringing to you the recommendation, Ms. Fall and Dr. Metcalf, to use the same model we've used in the past. So this is the same model that we presented to you last year and you approved. And Ms. Fall is going to briefly give you a little information on this, but this is, luckily, a routine matter, and it does come with my recommendation that you approve. Dr. Metcalf, Ms. Fall?
Thank you, yes, it's required by general statute. I think we've been using the progress model, the alternative to the school progress model since 2015. Okay, it's going to briefly just give you the components of that, and then we're here to answer any questions.
So after discussion with the CLC, we have made the request to continue with option B, which uses a 60-20-20 measure. 60% of the student score is based, or the school's score, is based on students' EVOs growth calculation. 20% is based on our achievement, based on those state assessments. And then 20% is based on student persistence, their ability to stay enrolled in a school program throughout the duration of the school year. In addition to that, the second piece is actually for the ESAR calculations, which is used for measuring a different set of measures, which come with different requirements. If there is not enough data to calculate a school performance grade for ESAR certifications, there are two options. One is to return the scores to the student's domiciled school, and then CLC gets the letter grade that matches the highest percent of their population, which in this case would be Pinecrest High School. Option two is to use three years of data, of CLC data, in order to calculate a score. Again, after discussing with CLC, we want to continue what we have done in the past, which is use three years of CLC data, so it's a true representation of the Community Learning Center. Although I will note that we have not had to use that option because we have had enough data to calculate in the past. And other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions, concerns?
I just have a comment. I'm real happy to see the 60% growth factor in there. I wish the legislature would understand what growth is and increase the amount of growth that is used to determine school grades.
Any additional comments? Thank you so much. We appreciate the information. Next, we have contracted psychological services for 2223. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this is for renewing the contracts that we had this year for psychological services and testing. We, the board may recall, as part of your ESAR budget, you did approve a small amount for us to contract psychological services for exceptional children's testing and assessment. And that's what this is, bringing these contracts back to you again for your approval for the next school year. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Powers and Ms. Edman for some brief information about this and, of course, answer any questions. Dr. Powers?
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Locklear. Yes, again, still trying to play, play some catch-up in relation to catching up with testing for our children who need that additional support and possibly exceptional children's services. So, again, looking to, looking to do the same things that we did last year, and I'll let Ms. Edman provide a little more information.
All right, good morning. Like Dr. Powers said, we still are well behind our special education testing referrals. And we now have gone from two vacancies in our psychology department to three vacancies for this coming year. So we are going to need these contracts even more than ever. We've had two psychologists fulfilling the contracts this year. They're both past employees, and they have proven track records, they continue to do a good job helping us catch up with testing, and I'd like to redo it again this coming year, with the same type of contracts with those two.
Charlie, would you slide that down, please, so that everyone can see what the cost is?
And the funding sources from ESAR funds, again, as it was for this past year.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, you have any questions, concerns? And it would, I don't know that we want to hold today, but it would be interesting, Dr. Powers, possibly at a future monthly update, just to give us some information on where we are with regard to catch-up. What does that look like with our students? Just so that we understand and know where we are and where we need to be, okay?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Dennison?
I just have a conceptual comment that really isn't about this particular. I understand this is being paid for with ESAR funds, but I, this is going to be a theme, right? That's why I'm saying, I'm talking about this in a conceptual level, is we are in the education business, right? The sheriff is in the law enforcement and protection business. The Moore County Health Department is in the health business, and the Moore County Department of Health and Human Services, they may be the same, I have no idea, they are in the providing social services business. So what I don't understand is why, and again, it's not related directly to this, because this is ESAR funds, but we, as a school district, need to take a look at why we're spending educational funds that are in categories that should be provided by other branches of Moore County or state government. And I just named three, you know? It is the sheriff's depart, it is the sheriff's responsibility to provide force protection and protection for our schools, yet here we are, spending educational dollars that could be going to hiring teachers and teachers' assistants to provide security of our schools. Same thing with, you know, everybody wants to expand education to be social services and health. Well, we already have bureaucracies in the state of North Carolina and in Moore County that, whose mission is to provide these services, and they're funded to do that. And if they're not doing that, then we should not take educational dollars and spend them on what other people should do, is we should make them do their job and make them spend their money doing that. So, again, it's a conceptual, it's a conceptual topic, but we need to spend our money on education, not creating duplicate bureaucracies for entities that already exist and are funded to do those functions.
Thank you.
So that is it, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes.
We're talking about Sub C here, am I correct?
Yes, uh-huh, contract on psychological services, yeah. Mr. Dennison?
Yeah, my comment is, obviously, the county can't provide those services, David. Plus, we have given Dr. Locklear the, has the responsibility of education, educating our children. It's our responsibility as the board to either say yea or nay on the recommendations he makes. It's not to change what recommendations he makes. We can vote yes or no on it, because we cannot tell him what to do and turn around and judge him. That's not, our responsibility is the judging, but we have the judging on the decisions he makes, not on the decisions we made for him.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have a response.
Okay.
So, it is not a foregone, I don't know where the statement comes from, that the Moore County Department of Health or whoever cannot provide these services. Mr. Dennison said, obviously, they can't. I don't know that that's true. I said in a board of health meeting last month, where their dental people said, we've been sitting around doing nothing since the pandemic, at the same time that we had our teachers doing contact tracing. So we had our teachers doing contact tracing, because the Department of Health couldn't possibly do all that contact tracing. But then I said in an Department of Health meeting where Department of Health people said, gosh, we're glad to be able to start doing stuff again, we've had nothing to do for a year and a half. So I don't agree with Mr. Dennison saying, obviously, the sheriff can't provide safety and security, obviously, the Department of Health cannot provide health services, and obviously, the Department of Social Services can't provide social services, because that's exactly their mission, it's in their name. So we need to spend educational dollars on education and make other branches of the government do the functions that they're supposed to do. That is all that I'm saying.
Thank you.
My question is...
Hold on just one moment.
I think we're way off topic here, whether it's police or health issues or whatever. What kind of testing is done under this contract?
Thank you, Ms. Carter. The school psychologists are specifically trained and hired by the Department of Public Instruction, Special Education Funding, and Department of Public Instruction Funding to do testing for students with disabilities. It's required by the state and federal laws that we identify students who are eligible for special education services, such as an IEP, to be tested by school psychologists. School psychologists are the only ones that are able to do the cognitive testing that's required. They're trained to do adaptive behavior testing, educational testing. They work with speech and occupational therapists to, and physical therapists, to evaluate the students, to determine eligibility for an IEP. For each IEP that we have, we have federal funding, and the psychologists, some of them come from special education funding, and some of them come from at-risk funding. But they all are doing testing for special education, which is required. There are no other agencies that have school psychologists, only the schools.
So we're looking at testing that is required by law...
Yes.
...to determine whether a child fits the category of exceptional child and needs additional supports within our schools. Therefore, we are required to do this?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's both initial, that's initial test, there's also reeval testing that has to occur, and so it's not, it's not like it's a one-shot deal.
Every three years, there's a reevaluation, yes.
And testing is in conjunction with their IEPs and the programs that they are assigned to, right, as they get?
Correct. So there are a number of different categories of exceptionalities, ranging from intellectual disabilities, learning disabilities, health impairments, there's 21 different categories, deaf and hard of hearing, et cetera, autism. And so part of the evaluation process is to determine which category a student is eligible for. That's a team decision based on lots of data, including the testing that's done by the psychologists. So the psychologists do the intellectual disability, they do the autism assessments, behavior emotional assessments, and they collect all that data, and then they write a report, and then the team makes a decision on eligibility and category. Sometimes a student may be eligible in two different categories, so then the team would decide what is the primary and what's the secondary category. Sometimes the team will make a decision that even though this student does have a diagnosis, they may not be eligible for special education, because there has to be certain criteria met in order to be eligible for special education. And that's, that's the team decision as well. Sometimes we may have parent requesting testing, and the parents may not, and the, or the physicians who refer for testing may not understand all of the implications, all of the requirements for eligibility in North Carolina. We have students coming from other states that have different eligibility criteria from other states across the country. And so those, those students have to be, a lot of military students, of course, come with IEPs, and the teams have to review those IEPs and that evaluation, and have to determine, do we need to do additional evaluation to see if they are eligible in North Carolina as opposed to a different state?
Okay, thank you. Next, if there are no more comments, we'll move into Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is item number D of our pending action and discussion. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an item that we've brought to the board over the course of a few years, continuing our support and our focus on the Capturing Kids' Heart professional learning and professional development that we, we have focused on and currently has, having six of our schools across our district. As the board may recall, this is a professional learning process and support for our teachers and for our adults in our schools that help them build positive, supportive school cultures, safe school cultures. And we've seen some success with this across our schools. And this is for a contract to continue to support it in the six schools that we have and staff that are coming on board there, as well as bringing one additional school on, I believe, Robbins Elementary School, Dr. Powers. So I'll let Dr. Powers give some brief information. It certainly comes with my recommendation that we approve this contract with Capturing Kids' Hearts for the next school year. Dr. Powers?
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Yes, and we are, as Dr. Locklear said, you know, our goal would be to...
Yes, and we are, as Dr. Locklear said, you know, our goal would be to be able to provide additional training for our six schools that are currently implementing capturing kids' hearts in terms of training new staff that would come onboard and who have not had that previously. And then would also like to bring onboard Robbins Elementary School. Again, capturing kids' hearts, you know, the model, we've, Southern Middle was our first school that piloted this back many years ago. And we saw really good success with it there. And it's a culture, it's a culture building model within the school. It's focused on adult behaviors and building strong relationships and helping students to feel connected to school. And I think we all understand the importance of that. Again, our six current schools are Southern Middle, Cranes Creek, Elise, McDees Creek, Aberdeen Elementary and Southern Pines Elementary. I do want to recognize Southern Middle and McDees Creek Elementary, who were again, again recently named as national showcase schools for their excellence in implementation. They were two of only eight schools in the state to receive that recognition. So we are certainly proud of the work at each of the schools, but certainly, certainly excellence at Southern Middle and McDees Creek Elementary. We are seeking to provide the training through Title Funds, Title One and Title Two, as we have done in past years. And again, just hopefully be able to continue to support our schools currently implementing. And then also, you know, a goal of bringing on another school would be great at Robbins. You know, those children feed into Elise and Elise, you know, has been trained. That's kind of how we've done this. Same with Aberdeen, Southern Pines, feeding into Southern Middle. And then along with Crane Creek, Cranes Creek as well. So I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Board members, do you have any comments, questions? Mr. Levy?
Yeah, I'm always concerned about, I'm concerned about this program. I was brought up before us last year and I'm concerned about it now. It costs us a teacher, $73,000. That's the cost of a teacher. It's the cost of a reading teacher. So to me, that's sort of serious business. It's a, it's a computer program, am I right?
No.
It is, what is it?
It's a, it's a, it's a model. Staff are trained over two days on how to, again, work with students and build relationships. So in terms of just creating a positive culture within the school, within the classroom.
Okay, not to cut you off here. One of the things that they do with this thing is they teach teachers to shake hands as they, or fist pump, or whatever they do, as they come into the classroom. That's part of, that's part of this, as I understand it. But what has been the progress that we have seen over the regular P B I S model, which we were told was being in use? And now we've got to put this on top of the P B I S model. So what, what's been the results? What's been the statistical results from, let's say, Southern Middle?
Yeah, I can share, and it does, it does supplement P B I S. So it does kind of marry very well with it because we do still also implement that in our schools. We've seen that, at each of the schools in terms of implementation, we've seen office referrals go down since the years prior to them starting. And then once they have started capturing kids' hearts, we see that number of office referrals go down. Also, up until, up until this year, you know, we have had some survey data from students related to teacher-student relationships. And we've also seen a positive correlation there that since capturing kids' hearts has started in those schools that are implementing, that the percentage of students who felt there were more positive teacher-student relationships has increased. So we've seen office referrals go down and perceptions of positive student-teacher relationships go up.
How has that, has that, has that been correlated to grade level performance?
Not currently, I can't speak to that. But we do feel like, you know, if you have a, you know, when the culture of a school is good, when students like their teachers, when they feel connected to their school, we do know that, you know, research does say that, you know, they're more likely to achieve.
Isn't there a way to get teachers connected to their students and students connected to their teachers by not spending $73,000 a year and maybe hiring another teacher like a, like a, 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 a reading intervention coordinator or something like that?
I don't know how that would build culture, but.
Let me, let me, just one perspective to keep in mind and certainly appreciate your questions, Mr. Levy, is that we're talking about two full trainings that were trained up to 100 staff members. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then we're talking about the availability of the professionals from Capturing Kids Hearts Organization to come out and to work with our schools through the year as well. I think they call those traction visits. And so I think we just want to put it in perspective. We're talking about training 100 staff members. And I would say, I had some of the same questions you had, you know, before I was trained through this a few years back. But I will say this is, this is a powerful training to help build skill sets in our adults and sure.
So that's $750 per staff member?
Roughly speaking, I guess you'd say, yes, sir. But I just wanted to put it in perspective of how many staff we're talking about this connecting to. And then the traction visits would be for the entire staffs of those schools. So just wanted to put that in perspective.
Just, I'll just close out by saying, Mr. Hensley was talking about a conceptual problem. And I have a conceptual problem with things like this, especially when I see we are a national showcase for capturing kids' hearts. Guys, I said this to the previous, to the previous administration, and I say it again, that's a sales pitch, okay? That's them trying to sell you something. If it works for us, fine, but we have to start looking at our dollars, our real dollars, especially our Title One dollars. And we have to say, bottom lining it, are we raising grade level performance? And if our investments are not raising grade level performance, then we have to say, what will? And maybe we've got to drop things like capturing kids' hearts and maybe have more internally coordinated P B I S and yet bring in a reading specialist. Just a thought, just my feeling. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
If I can add something, I don't know if you guys can hear me or not, though.
We can, we can hear you.
Okay, I was just going to say, just because I have a child at one of these schools that I've seen students feel more connected, the school and the staff. I've seen the higher, the higher academic success that it's had on students as far as tardiness and attendance. And we all know that plays a huge part in academic success when you're tardy, when you're not tardy. And I'll just give you an example. Seventh grade for Cranes Creek Middle School has won several times and it correlates with P B I S, of course. But my daughter gets very excited and often tells me, I can't be late, I can't be late, I'm going to ruin the streak. So I think a lot of that is just the positive reinforcement that it has on schools that just really helps children overall become connected with each other and the, and the teachers because they want to make the teachers feel proud of them. I really do feel we need this and I think I've seen it work wonderfully.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley, did you have something?
I do. So how long have we been doing capturing kids' hearts? How long have we been participating in this program?
Southern Middle School, we piloted it there. I'm going to, I think seventeen, 2017?
So five years.
Yeah, I think sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah, so at some point, you would think that if we've done five years of this, that it's integrated into our culture and we no longer have to pay outside consultants. My second question is, these awards that are up here, national this and state that, who gives those awards?
It's based on.
No, no, I'm sorry, who gives those awards?
Who gives them?
Yes, who, who, who decides? Was that the governor presenting those awards?
No, no.
Or the Biden administration?
It's capturing kids' hearts.
So it's the people we write the check to giving us awards?
It is, but based on criteria that you have to meet for implementation. Not just every, but that's why all six schools aren't.
Yeah, I'm sorry, who sets the criteria for the awards?
They do.
Okay, so, so the people that we write the $73,000 check to, which by the way is right at what a teacher costs us, to Bob's point. So the people that we forgo a teacher for, for five years, those are the people who set the criteria and give the awards?
It's their award.
Okay. Yeah, I would think at some point that if the program's good, that it would become part of our culture and we could just go back to hiring a teacher rather than paying outside consultants. And then I guess my last point is that we have all kinds of things we're being, that we're implementing. We've implemented M T S S and we've implemented P B, P B I S or whatever it's called. And those have a cost associated with it. And then we have these outside consultants. But yet we say, well, gosh, because of capturing kids' heart, which costs us a teacher, we've seen this, this, and this positive outcome. How do we normalize to make sure that it wasn't the implementation of P B I S and M T S S and other programs? How did we normalize to make sure that it wasn't other programs we were implementing that was the cause of these successes, not, not capturing kids' hearts? You said there was a decrease.
Yeah, it was. I mean, it's the progress that we saw the year, in the years after implementation. So are there other things going on? Absolutely.
Yeah, so how do we know that it's, that those weren't responsible for the increased attendance or whatnot?
I'm just sharing the data that I have.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm sure there's no way to, I mean, just really filter out. This program gave us 3% and this program gave us 7%. Therefore, let's do this program. My understanding with capturing kids' hearts is that it gives a child ownership in their school and places and puts responsibility upon the children as well as the adults that they are dealing with to, to meet the goals, whether it's getting to class on time, whether it's having perfect attendance, whether it's turning in homework every day, whatever their goal might be within the class. It's putting responsibility where it needs to be, which is upon the children who can meet those responsibilities and the teachers that deal with them. I know when we toured classrooms, and I know Mr. Levy and I did quite a few of them. I don't know whether everybody else has been in them. The children were quite proud in the classrooms in which we entered. They, there was a, I don't know what they called their classroom greeter. That wasn't, the ambassador, I think it was, was immediately up and making sure that those of us who entered the classroom were well informed of what the classroom guidelines were, the rules that had to be followed. And we signed off that we would support those particular guidelines within that classroom. Each classroom was a little bit different. But it meant that the children were responsible for, for making these things happen. And if that is a, is the outcome of capturing kids' hearts, it's an extremely positive one. And it's one that goes much farther than hiring one additional teacher might be able to do because it's affecting children already in six schools and will be added to a seventh. So I see far-reaching progress that comes out of this in many, many different ways that can not only improve a child's performance in school, but perhaps improve a child's relationship with his or her own parents or other relatives that they deal with or other, other employers that they meet in their high school years. So I see a lot of benefit to capturing kids' hearts. I don't know if the money that is being allocated for this, since it comes from Title One and Title Two funds, could have been used to hire another teacher. I know there are, there's a lot of red tape connected to Title, federal Title money. So, you know, is that something that's possible? I also know that, that Title One and Title Two money is not guaranteed year to year. Consequently, we would, could, would be basing a position of employment on something that may not, may or may not exist the next year, with my understanding with those programs. So I see capturing kids' hearts as an incredibly positive aspect going into the schools. I'm just sorry that we do not have it in all of our schools because I think it fosters a feeling of well-being and mutual respect that is absolutely necessary.
And I'll also share, if you have questions about the training, I mean, if it's approved and we have it, it's a two-day training, we'll do it in August, on the work, on two of the workdays. I certainly would encourage anyone who would like to attend to come. And see, it's powerful, it is powerful. And it's hard to, it's hard to know that without being a part of it. I've been trained as well. It's worth your time to do that.
I have a question.
Okay.
I know the answer, but are there any positions that are losing their Title One and Title Two funds, virtually eliminating a position? Like I said, I know the answer, I just want to.
Yeah, I do not.
Is that something, Dr. Locklear, that we need to follow up on, that question?
We can follow up on that. Each year, each Title, each of our Title One schools get their projected allotments. There may be changes in what a school is making decisions on, on funding. We also have district-wide positions, instructional support facilitators through Title One funding. So we definitely can get some information back to the board if there's any positions being eliminated as a result of that.
This as an action item.
I've already got it as an action item, yes, I already have it.
But to answer Ms. Carter's question, Title Two funds are targeted toward professional development, professional learning, federal Title Two funds. You can't hire positions for that if there's a position that's providing professional learning and support for teachers, Title One funding. A majority of that goes out to our Title One schools. There is some at the district level that supports district-level initiatives like those support coaches that are in our Title One schools. So you can create a position from that. So it can be done, but, you know, you slice it over those, those title schools, basically.
I just want to be, I just want to be clear.
Okay.
It, I'm not, I guess what I'm concerned is, is if there was a position for a teacher, then the next year, oh, we don't have the Title One funds. And then this comes along and it's like, oh, we have teachers that may not have a job, but we can buy a program. And I don't, I think we really need to look into that hard.
Yes, sir, we can offer clarity of how that works and how, how the title funds go, go to our individual schools based on the per pupil allotment that our title schools get. And that varies from year to year based on, based on their situation.
Thank you.
And based on our funds we're getting from the federal government.
Mr. Denson?
I'll go back to the point I made before. We've charged the superintendent with the responsibility of doing what he feels is best for the success of our students. And I think Dr. Locklear and his staff are in a much better position to make a decision on what's best for our kids than board members are since we really don't know what's actually going on there. So you can't just look at the dollars, you have to look at the effect as far as the student achievement. So again, if you're not in favor of it, just vote no when it comes up next week.
Board members, at this time, do we need a break? We will break a bit before 12:00. Do we want to push on? Do you need a five-minute break?
I have a comment in response to the other board members' comments.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see your comment, go ahead.
So, you know, here's my point is, is if the training is truly that powerful and valuable going into the fifth year of us doing it, if it was that powerful and this and that, you would think by year two or three that we would just do the training ourselves. I mean, I can't imagine there being anything magical that someone that sits through it and uses it for a year or two, that all of a sudden we just adopt it. I see no reason why we couldn't adopt it and do our training ourselves rather than giving up a teacher to fill up in Bob's point. As for Mr. Denson's point about, you know, telling the superintendent what to do and what not to do, you know, that's our job is to do oversight. I'm not talking about micromanaging. I'm talking about preventing. I'm talking about preventing, for example, you know, the funneling of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to groups that we receive no benefit from, which has happened, uh, in the past. And it's our job, uh, as representative of the citizens of Moore County to make sure that the money is spent wisely and that it's targeted and focused on our mission statement.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Um, again, do we wanna take a break? Or do we wanna keep on moving for the next, uh, presentation? Is everybody good?
I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, so let's move into Career and Technical Education Comprehensive Needs Assessment. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this is for, um, our application of Career Technical Education Comprehensive Needs Assessment. This is basically our district's application, uh, to the Department of Public Instruction to receive our funding for our career technical education, uh, programs and for our staff that, that provide for our career technical education, our vocational education courses in our schools. I again wanna thank board members who stepped in to consult with Dr. Scott and Dr. Metcalf to walk through this plan and get some feedback and ask some questions so there'd be some, some context on the board about what this is about a little, a little more clearly. Appreciate Mr. Hensley doing that and, as well as Mr. Dennison. Uh, and before I turn it over to Dr. Metcalf and Dr. Scott, just didn't know if there was any comments Mr. Dennison and Mr. Hensley would like to make.
I reckon, you know, we reviewed this. Uh, I recommend, I, I think the money is spent wisely. I think it is spent frugally. I think we get a lot of bang for the buck. And my recommendation is that the board approve the plan as proposed.
Same here.
Thank you. I have the same recommendation. Dr. Metcalf?
And we're just, and we're simply here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
If you could just do like a, a overview, please, for other board members that, um, that wasn't a part of your discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, Chair Thompson. So, uh, we received three allocations of funding from the state and federal to have our CTE program survive and work. Um, and when you get the, uh, updates on the credentials that you'll see, we're continuing to grow this program exponentially. So the first allotment of money is a state allocation called PRC-013. And this allocation is months of employment to fund, um, the money for all of our teachers and staff that make our career and technical education happen. Um, our PRC-014 is also a state allocation and these funds are used for student supplies, materials, um, curriculum support, administrative support. Uh, they support our Business Advisory Council, which we are required to host, um, and professional development for our new employees and our middle school program. Our PRC-017 is a federal allocation, which is used to expand our program through software for students, workshop expenses, curriculum support and development, and student field trips. And we did get a slight increase in all of these funds this year.
It's the best news this morning.
Exactly!
Everything's covered.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, so we have, um, two different allocations. We have the one, uh, PRC-014 from the state and PRC-017 from, uh, from federal. And both went up, so any comments, questions?
Just, just one.
Okay.
And this really has nothing to do with the technical aspects of it. It's, I believe, we're, we're running a very, very good, uh, CTE program, except that no one knows what CTE is. And I'm talking about the general public, okay? Uh, it's, for anybody who wants to know, it's vocational education. And I, I look over here and it says, uh, in-person blended connect ed. Where's the vocational education? Okay, one, one of the problems is when I talk with members of the general public, they say, well, you know what we really need in the schools is vocational education. And, but, and I try to explain that we have it. And, uh, it's actually so massive, it's, so it's hard to explain. But the bottom line is we have to do a much better job explaining it to the public and letting the public know what our offerings are in career and technical education. And we also have to let people know that one of the alternatives for Moore County schools is not just in-person education. Because people think of kids in a, thirty kids in a class with someone with a blackboard, you know, or a, a smart board, I should say, and, um, uh, going over, uh, the, um, you know, the thirteen original colonies or something like that. Or we do, uh, blend, we, or we do blended from homeschool or connect ed. Uh, people have to know that there's, that there's no charter school that will give, uh, that will give students, uh, vocational education and no, um, student debt. That's the key. Not to, to, to leave school with a job and to not have a hundred thousand dollars in debt that you're gonna pay over the next thirty years and hope that, um, that the President of the United States will get rid of ten thousand dollars of it or something, some, some small amount like that. So my only hope is that we do a much better job in terms of PR. That's just my feeling.
Thank you.
Why don't I ask one question? Okay, so we get an additional nine months of employment. But a teacher needs ten months of employment. Uh, how, how does that get utilized?
So if we do not use that nine months of employment, we can turn that money into supply money at the end of the year next year to buy needed supplies to continue to support our teachers and their programs.
Or we have a nine-month teacher, right?
Or we have a nine-month teacher, yes, ma'am.
Which is a little more difficult. So as long as all the, the spots that we need covered by instructional personnel are covered?
Yes, ma'am.
Then this would be an additional time. I mean, not, I mean, it's great. I'm not gonna ever complain about more money coming in, but just question nine months.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Hensley?
Just one comment is, uh, you know, in addition to this, the big, the big, um, the big force multiplier that we can have and hopefully we will have in our CTE slash VOTEC program is harnessing the power of the community. And we've talked about this, that, you know, the business community and the, and, uh, other interested people. And, you know, that, that's, that's gonna, you know, hopefully come to fruition in, in, in the out years.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Next, we have, um, our risk management coverage, coverage plans for twenty-two, twenty-three. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm glad Mr. Cox walked in. I was looking for him. Uh, Mr. Cox is here to share with the board a couple of items. The first, risk management plans. You may remember having some discussion on this item as a board last year. And we did put an RFP out for those risk management plans for the board, worked with a consultant to get us, uh, to get a, a, a real good look at those options for the board. And so Mr. Cox is, is bringing, uh, information on that and recommendation. Certainly has my recommendation to move forward with these plans. So, Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. As, as Dr. Locklear mentioned, um, at the board, uh, our commitment to the board last year, we, we did analysis of the risk management plans during the year. Um, our commitment to the board was to do an, an RFP or some type of process to, um, look at our insurance coverages for, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three year. So, uh, we did do an RFQ process, uh, seeking brokers, uh, to go out to market to bid, um, our insurance coverages. And we started that process, uh, in January, went out with the RFQ in February. Um, as you see here, we only received two responses, uh, to that. We, uh, published in News and Preserver and the Pilot. We published on a couple of different state websites. Um, and additionally on our website as well. Only one of those responses was a true insurance broker. The other was a current, uh, one of our current vendors that provided insurance services for us. Um, so based on the limited number of responses we got, we felt it was appropriate to have those two that at least did take the time to respond, to bid on any insurance that they could provide, knowing that they didn't, uh, each provide all the types of insurance coverage that the, the board needs, uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. So based on, um, the proposals we're bringing forward, recommendations for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, um, as you see here in the executive summary, uh, for property coverage, uh, uh, go with the North Carolina Department of Insurance, um, which was formerly through the Department of Public Instruction. This premium is based on the current year premium. Our policy renews in August, so we'll have renewals coming, um, to us within the next month or so. We do anticipate probably a slight decrease because our value has decreased now that we have sold the surplus properties. That premium for last year was based on, uh, having all the surplus properties, but they have now, um, been sold, so we have less, uh, about thirty million less, uh, forty million less in property values to cover now. Um, as I'll note here, we did not receive any additional proposals for property insurance. The one broker said he could not even come close to competing with, um, what, uh, the Department of Insurance provided this time, so he was not going to submit a proposal. Uh, the next coverage is our automobile and inland marine coverage. That, uh, coverage is currently through, uh, North Carolina School Boards Trust. Um, based on the proposals, uh, in consultation with our consultant, um, we are recommending, uh, using Utica National Insurance Group with Suri Insurance as the broker. Their calls for both, uh, auto and inland marine, sixty-one thousand, three sixty-eight, has broken down by forty-five, just forty-five thousand for automobile and sixteen thousand for our inland marine coverage. It is a decrease of nearly twenty thousand dollars over the current year coverage that we have through the School Boards Trust, about twenty-three percent. And those policy dates will be July one, uh, twenty-two through June thirty of twenty-three. Uh, the next, uh, uh, coverage is our work, workers' compensation coverage currently with EMC, our Employees Mutual Casualty Company. Suri Insurance is our broker for that. Um, the call for the twenty-two, twenty-three year is two hundred and two thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. It's a decrease of about thirty-two thousand, uh, fourteen percent in premium compared to the prior year. Our modifier rate did stay the same, um, as prior year. And as you see, we did receive additional quote, which was from the School Boards Trust, and their coverage, or their quote was two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So we are recommending going with, uh, EMC through Suri Insurance for our workers' comp. Uh, the next two items are not items that are required to be brought to the board as they're under the threshold of fifty thousand dollars, but they are items that, um, the board, uh, has certainly mentioned as, uh, uh, area of interest. So we wanted to bring them, um, as information to the board as well as part of this. Um, our general liability or errors and emissions coverage is currently through the North Carolina School Boards Trust. As you see the last bullet there, uh, we received no additional quotes for our, uh, errors and emissions and general liability coverage. Uh, the broker did go to market and his, uh, proposal that he was gonna present to us, which, um, he didn't, he said was gonna be at least twice as much as what we're currently paying. So, uh, we are recommending staying with the School Boards Trust for our general liability coverage, premium of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars, which is a slight increase over the current year, um, coverage. And then the last item, uh, again, is for information. Right now, we do not have a finalized quote for our cyber coverage. However, um, we are paying se, almost twenty thousand, a little over seventeen thousand right now for our coverage. The broker has said that there are districts that are even not able to secure, uh, cyber coverage now just based on what's going on with all the cyber attacks and them having to put in additional requirements, security features that the insurance companies are requiring, so some folks are not able to secure coverage. He doesn't think that's gonna be an issue for us, but he said he expects our premium to more than double to approximately forty thousand dollars for this year. So I just wanna make the board aware of that, um, once we finally get the quotes for that. It's just, I know that's a hot topic, um, for the board. I just wanna make the board aware of that. If you'll go to the attachments, Charlie, uh, real quick.
Mr. Cox, before you leave this?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you, did you indicate that the Suri Insurance Broker, are they new from their new, from new RFPs or do we currently have them?
We, we, Suri Insurance currently provides service to us.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And if you go, you go ahead to, go to the other attachments, Charlie, and I'll try to, try to highlight. Uh, yeah, if you'll, uh, make that a little bit bigger. Yeah, right there, perfect. Uh, our workers' compensation is, as you see, agent is Suri. Our cyber liability is currently Suri. Um, and our fidelity bonds and crime policy is currently through Suri. So they are
Thank you.
are providers to us. We're only rec, we're recommending to switch to Suri for our auto and inland marine, um, based on, uh, the proposal they submitted. That's really only changed to them, but they do, uh, currently provide service to us. Now, if you scroll over, uh, so I can see, oh, that's, that's good. There you go. This is, the, that, next to last column is a column of all the different insurance, uh, covers that we're recommending for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. You'll see, I've got a couple of quotes scheduled, twenty-one, twenty-two there. We haven't received the actual quotes for those coverages. The twenty-five, seven, twenty-one is our student accident, um, coverage. We don't anticipate much of an increase there for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Um, but I just wanted to note that. That seventeen hundred dollars, uh, is for volunteer coverage. We haven't gotten the final, but I don't anticipate much of an increase for that one. The one that has NA is, um, student field trip coverage. During the, uh, RFQ process and the reviewing of our coverages, um, we determined that our, uh, student accident athletic coverage through the young group, covers student field trips as well. So we didn't, uh, didn't feel it was appropriate to go out and get additional coverage for those student field trips. So that's why there's a NA there. Um, and then the last two, uh, one is our, uh, fidelity bonds to cover, uh, the finance staff and blanket for all others that handle money in the district. And then, um, the, uh, career technical education for those students who are doing, um, workplace things related to their, uh, CTE program. We have coverage on them as well. I did get in, after I submitted the, uh, executive summary, I did get in the quote for the CTE and that'll be about fifteen hundred as opposed to a thousand dollars based on, uh, a dollar amount, increase in coverage and also some increased participation, um, by our CTE students. So that's the only change there. Um, so overall, it will be a slight decrease in coverage, about, about five percent for the risk management plans for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And any questions? Mr. Levy?
Yeah, I would just like, before you, you make your final recommendation at our next meeting, if you would consult our new attorneys. And the reason is Mr. Schwartz made a comment, I believe it was Mr. Schwartz's comment, that, uh, some of his, um, some of his other, uh, school districts don't use, uh, uh, the same workers' comp and we don't, they don't use the same, um, uh, liability coverage as we use through, uh,
Their trust.
North Carolina School Boards Association. Now, I'm not saying that's good or bad or right or wrong. I don't know. This is just way out of my wheelhouse. But I'd just like for you or, or Dr. Locklear to talk briefly to Mr. Schwartz about it. And, um, maybe it's just something that you just shine on. I, I just don't know.
Mr. Hensley?
I'm glad that overall our insurance costs are decreasing. You obviously, insurance is, uh, a, uh, is necessary. I would like to see a copy of the cyber insurance schedule, of the actual policy, just to see. People are always trying to sell my company cyber insurance and it seems like a high-profit item for, uh, the people who sell it. So just, I'd like to see a copy of the, the proposed policy.
So, so we don't have a proposed policy yet, um, but certainly can provide that once we receive that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And, oh, yes, one, one, one last thing. You should be of a mindset that insurance costs should go lower. Because as we go into a higher, um, as we go into a, um, higher interest atmosphere, uh, insurance companies tend to be more profitable and they tend to be able to compete better at lower rates. The reason is they have to keep a lot of money on hand in cash and they get much more money on their money. So there is a, there, there is a, a good reason for looking for lower rates in this particular high-interest atmosphere.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and thank you, Mr. Cox. Next, we're continuing budget resolution item for '22-'23, and...
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Locklear.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. And this is for, just as the title of the executive summary is, and this is something the board looks at each year, this time of year, to approve a continued budget resolution as final information around the state's budget and other budget information comes through over the summer. And Mr. Cox can give you some brief information about this, but this is something that the board looks at and approves each year and comes with my recommendation. Mr. Cox?
And like Dr. Locklear mentioned, this is a continuing budget resolution, allow us to continue payroll and accounts payable until we know what the state budget's gonna ultimately be, what we know, until we know what our local budget's gonna be. And then at that time, we can prepare an initial budget resolution to bring back to the board for approval. But this will allow us to pay the bills and accounts payable and payroll until the board approves that initial budget resolution, which will be early fall of '22.
And this is usually a routine item this time of year?
It is, yes, ma'am, correct.
Comments, questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Cox. Next, we're moving into modular units with roof restoration at both Pinecrest and Union Pines. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Baraf is joining us for a couple items. First, a capital bid project for repair of modular roofing with some modular units at Pinecrest High School and Union Pines High School. I'll let Ms. Baraf take us through that recommendation. Ms. Baraf?
Mr. Baraf, before you get started, let me check on Stacy. Stacy, are you still with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just checking on you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a wellness check, right? Thank you, Dr. Locklear, Chair Thompson. So you may be familiar with the Union Pines and Pinecrest campuses, behind the buildings, there's large modular unit at both campuses. There are about 12 classrooms in there. Those roofs are rubber roofing systems. We had anticipated them to continue to hold. However, we, upon a request of a leak in one of them, re-inspected the roofs to find that areas of that rubber roofing system are deteriorating, and the seams are beginning to come apart. Those cannot be easily patched. It's a single-ply rubber membrane over that, and once you have deteriorating seams, you pretty much are in a position where you'd have a major project in your hands. However, based on the success of the restoration of the roof over at the Technology Building at Pickney, we met with the manufacturers and installers for these coating systems of silicone-based, and the systems quotes are shown here that we received to repair both roofs at Pinecrest and Union Pines on those modular units. The system that was installed at the Technology Building at Pickney went down well, has held up very well, and it's in initial service, and has saved substantial amount of money and is warranted for 10 years. This will allow time, as the board continues to enter into the master facility plan, analysis, and development, to, again, not have a condition with these units where they would further deteriorate. So EnviroShield Roofing Services Incorporated was the apparent low bidder at $65,805. Again, these are services they provide throughout the Carolinas, and it comes with a staff recommendation that the board award this. The funds will be paid through the capital local funds. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
And the cost is currently within the budget?
Of our local capital. This was not identified in the board's priority top projects within that, however, the need necessitated something to be done now.
Okay, alright, thanks for the clarification. Any comments, questions, board members?
Just one. These modular units, is there any place in our master plan for replacing these modular units, especially the ones, I, I don't know which ones you're talking about, this is at Union Pines, right?
At Pinecrest.
And besides, I'm more familiar with Union Pines. I'm not talking about the one in the back portion. Are we talking about the ones on the side of the school?
No, this is that large unit in the back. The ones on the side are being restored and renovated this summer.
Okay, alright. Shouldn't we have some plan somewhere sometime to get rid of all those modular units at Union Pines? And where does that, where does that, where does that put on the overall schedule?
Right now, that is part of the current master facility plan that the board adopted in 2015, with the initial phases of additions and renovations to Pinecrest High School and Union Pines High School. And again, the board will be taking up this discussion in the months ahead as you revisit and create a new master facility plan for the schools.
Okay, so I wanted to issue some concern...
November timeframe.
Well, I wanted to just issue some concern about those, those modular facilities would seem more and more like permanent facilities than anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Baraf, appreciate your updates. Next, we have child nutrition for '22-'23 bid awards. Dr. Locklear?
Yes, ma'am. I want to welcome Ms. Jan Lovelady, our Director of Child Nutrition Services, to join Ms. Baraf to brief the board on various bids for food and supplies and beverages coming into the next, next school year, all those things our students enjoy eating and appreciate our child nutrition staff providing for them every day. So, Ms. Baraf?
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. And with that introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Lovelady to walk you through the bids that have been received for the items noted.
Thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
We had invitations for bids for a number of items. The first several were made through the North Carolina Procurement Alliance. The bid opening was held in May at the McKimmon Center in Raleigh. We only had one bid submitted for the general groceries bid, and this was from Cisco Raleigh at $1,408 and $240, and it's recommended for award to Cisco Raleigh. U.S. Foods and Gordon Food Services submitted paperwork stating that they were declining to bid this year. We had three responders to the supplies bid, Southeastern Paper, Imperial Dade, and Cisco Raleigh. We found that the bid submitted by Imperial Dade was disqualified for noncompliance with the bid requirements, and therefore, the low bid was submitted by Cisco Raleigh at $219,800. And it is recommended that they are awarded the bid for supplies. We also had two responders for the beverage bid, Pepsi Bottling Ventures and Cisco Raleigh. Beverages are awarded as lime items. This allows local, smaller distributors that may not carry all of the items on the bid to be able to compete. It is recommended that these awards each go to the low bidder for each of the items shown, which is the 16.9 ounce water would go to Pepsi, sparkling water to Cisco, all of the juice items would go to Cisco, and Pepsi would get the isotonics, which is Gatorade. Bid renewal is available for Produce. The original bid was open in May of 2018 for the '18-'19 school year, and this was issued through the North Carolina Procurement Alliance. Honeycut Produce was the lowest bottom line bidder, and as such, was recommended for award of that bid. We've communicated with Honeycut Produce, seeking a fourth and final year renewal for the Produce bid for the 2022-2023 school year. Produce's bid at cost plus fixed delivery fee, and they are willing to renew at the fixed fee of $1.35 per case. And so we recommend renewal. In April, we issued invitations for bid for milk and ice cream. These have to be done separately from the alliance. The bid opening was held in May in our offices, and there were two responders to the milk bid, Maola Local Dairies and Pet Dairies. And Maola Local Dairy submitted the lowest bottom line bid and is recommended for award. In this case, Child Nutrition owns the milk boxes at each school site, and so the holding equipment is not included in the unit price of the milk. There was only one responder for the ice cream bid, and that was Hershey Creamery at $37,000, or $37,359, and it's recommended that the award go to Hershey. Pet Dairy submitted paperwork declining to bid this year. In this case, they provide the equipment for, and the freezers, and so that is calculated into the cost of the ice cream. The bids were submitted at firm fixed price per unit and is based on an estimate that we provided for them, but the district is not held to the estimate and pays for only what is actually delivered to each of the schools. Child Nutrition recommends that the contract for milk be awarded to Maola and for ice cream to be awarded to Hershey. Are there any questions?
And I think it's important, again, to stress that Child Nutrition Department only pays for items that they receive at the schools in their kitchens for preparation and sale to students. So while these numbers are on estimates, it could be less or it could be more, but we will not be held to that number regardless.
Thank you. Board members, you have any questions, comments?
I do.
Mr. Levy?
Yeah. How, how is this affecting the cost of school lunch, or do we know with respect, with, with respect to the assumption that we're not going to get a waiver next year?
We are concerned about costs for next year. We have been assessing and looking into that. USDA has not released the reimbursement rates yet for meals, so we haven't been able to finalize our projected budget costs and any potential increases to meals for breakfast and lunch at this time. We are continuing our evaluation in that, in the impacts of that. We have spoken and met with Dr. Locklear to discuss this, and I think you had a...
Well, once, once John and Jan, Ms. Lovelady and Ms. Baraf gets that information, I think it would be, it'd be another one of those good opportunities to bring in a couple consultants from the board to connect with John and with Ms. Lovelady, and, and to discuss what, what that impact looks like, get some feedback, answer some questions, so there's some, some good understanding of what we're looking at. But like, like Ms. Baraf said, it is a concern. It is a concern for every school district in the state, that, that meal prices more than likely will have to be increased. And not only are you looking at the cost of items, but you're also looking at the cost of labor that is going up as well. And so all those, as a self-sustaining fund, Child Nutrition is a self-sustaining fund that cannot operate in the negative. It is something that we have to take a real broad, deep look at, and be bringing the board a recommendation no later than August. Don't expect to get information in time enough to bring it to you in July, but no later than August.
Okay, I think one of our functions as a board, whether we like it or not, some of us aren't into so much into social services or whatever, but we feed children, and we have to guarantee that every child gets fed, and that it's done at a reasonable cost, and we also need to know whether that's gonna come out of our bottom line, but it's something we've got to do. And we've gotta sacrifice capturing kids' hearts to do it. I'll do it, you know? But the food and nutrition program is extremely important, I think, to every person in our county.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, comments? So we feel like that we won't have an update until probably work session in August?
That's correct.
We, yes, ma'am, and that would be a recommendation on what those, those meal fees would be for the next school year at the August work session. That is the goal. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. At this time, board members looking at our agenda items for next Monday. Item A, under pending action and discussion, consent. Item B, alternative accountability for CLC, consent. Item C, contracted psychological services. Do we feel that needs to be action or consent?
Action.
Okay, that's what, I had a question mark. Item D, capturing kids' hearts would be action. Item E, career and technical education, comprehensive needs assessment. I have consent. Item F, risk management coverage plans for '22-'23. Mr. Cox, will we have what we need, are we, where we need the information to have that for next Monday? Or did you have some items that you were looking to update us on?
So we have all the information we need, that the board has to, if anything, that's over $50,000, we have that information, and the board can move forward with it where it is.
Okay, okay. All right, and I have that item as consent.
Let me, if that could be just an action item, I'm not so sure that I wouldn't agree that it'd be consent later on, but I just would like to get some more feedback from our new council on that.
Okay.
We'll follow up on that, Ms. Lovelady.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number G, which is continuing budget resolution for '22-'23. I have that one as consent.
Did we, did we cover that?
Today, yeah. That was, remember, Mr. Bob asked a question about Union Pines and where it was located, the modular units. That's what...
No, 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 that wasn't the continuing budget resolution.
I think we may have skipped to G.
No, we did it.
No, we, we did it, we did it, but there was no comment on it. It is a long, it is a long thing about a continuing budget resolution. If you want to take a closer look at it, I'll go along with the...
Are you asking about the budget resolution, or the, is that what you're asking about?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we did cover that.
That just allows them to pay the bills for another month until the budget comes in.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Number, item number H, modular units, roof restoration, both at Pinecrest and Union Pines. I have that one as consent, as well as item number I, child nutrition updates with regard to bid awards. I have that one as consent as well. Dr. Locklear, do we have any items that we have a placeholder for? I know we have the item for Mr. Philip Holmes with regard to Book George. Do we have any other items that we have a placeholder for, for next Monday?
No, ma'am.
That, that is the only item?
That is the only item that, that we discussed, and we have on it as a placeholder and stuff.
Okay, so, so please make sure that we add that item. Board members, any questions, concerns about those items that will be action items for, for our agenda next Monday?
We're all set with our appeals. We don't have to do anything else.
That's correct.
Yeah, we finalized that, and everything is done with that. Board members, at this time, let's go ahead and take our lunch break. Mr. Hensley?
I have an administrative thing. My, you know, I had a conference call at noon, and that's been rescheduled. So if we want to take a short break and then do the last item on the agenda, I mean, it's up to the board.
I was, I, I think we're gonna have more questions about, the next one is regarding safety planning, possibly SROs, so I think that may take a little bit longer. So I feel like if we're ready, that we can take a early lunch, where's Ms. Parker? We can take a early lunch break, and then we can come back, say, quarter after, does that sound good?
I would be.
Okay.
As, as an alternative, we could have lunch, we could have, eat lunch while we're having a meeting.
What?
I don't care.
Okay, so let's just take a break and come, and come back at 15 minutes after the hour. We'll recess at this time.
I'm gonna just hang, hang on here, I'll just mute everything, so don't hang up on me.
Thank you.
Go take a nap, baby.
Yeah, I need to.
Want something for lunch, Stacy?
Yeah, what you got?
Looks like pizza, will I want?
Though I can't taste anything, I lost all my senses of smell and taste, so.
Well, you're, you're actually lucky, mine, mine became like alternate, and there was nothing that I liked to eat.
Oh. I'm hoping it comes back, but right now, it's nothing.
Yeah.
All right, enjoy you guys' lunch.
Our work session back to order for our reports, information and discussion items on school safety, planning systems and processes. Before we get started, Stacy, do we still have you with us?
Yes ma'am.
All right, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, this is, this information item obviously is a very timely item. Unfortunately, with the tragedy that happened in Texas recently at the end of May, it certainly brings up questions around what we're doing here in our school district to support school safety and what we're doing to ensure that as best possible in our schools and what we've done over the past few years. So, Dr. Powers is going to be doing a review of those systems and processes that we utilize and refine each and every year. We also had the opportunity, Chief Hardy and Sergeant Bullins, back in March, to present about our school police force and some of the training and purposes behind school resource officers. And Chief Hardy was scheduled working with Dr. Powers to have information around our training plans moving forward and equipment needs moving forward. And so Chief Hardy is here also to share that information about here are our training plans over the summer moving into the next year and what will be continued annually, and a little information about equipment needs that we're moving forward with acquiring going into the next school year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Powers to review what will always be one of our top priorities as a school district. Dr. Powers.
And Dr. Powers, I'm sorry, before you get started, I just wanted to make a note for everyone that Mr. Holmes will not be with us for this session. He had to leave, so just wanted to make everyone aware. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Locklear, yes. Yeah, happy to share the information about the planning, the safety processes and measures that the school district has put in place. I will say that over the past number of years, about probably the last five years or so, we've really, really taken a hard look at improving safety on our campuses. You know, our Office for Student Support Services, you know, the main mission of that office is the safety, health and welfare of our students and staff. So pleased to share an update related to that and kind of revisit many of the things that we have done. I'm going to start by sharing some reactive and proactive measures that have been put in place and that help to keep our schools and campuses safe. I do want to point out that this is, it's not a complete list of everything that we have. There are some, some measures that we have in place that we're not, not at liberty to share publicly because doing so honestly would negate the effectiveness of those measures. But there are many things that we can share and talk about. I want to start with our Moore County Schools Police and the fact that our police force is one of the major things that we have to help to keep our campuses safe. We have 13 officers and a chief of police. Those officers are assigned to our school. All campuses are covered, but of course with 13 officers in 22 schools, we don't have an officer on all campuses all the time. The officers are stationed at our secondary schools and then also serve and cover elementary schools as they can. Now ideally, we would love to have a police officer on every campus. We feel like that would be, you know, the ultimate security on our campuses. But again, that would take an additional nine, nine officers to make that happen. We also annually update our district and school emergency response plans, those teams, as well as the black boxes that are, that are at each school for use in a, in a crisis. We also have crisis management quick flip guides in all of our classrooms. Those are in the holders beside each door and those highlight and provide direction related to the most likely crisis situations that might occur in a school. For example, lockdown procedures and/or medical emergencies and what to do in those situations where you can't, you know, you can't pull out a manual or run to your computer to pull it up. We have our lockdown drills. We know those protocols and drills, four annual lockdown drills on each campus. We also have very collaborative and supportive relationships with outside law enforcement agencies. We're very appreciative of the Moore County Sheriff's Department and the support that they, to provide, provide to the schools. We know if there's ever a need, we know we can reach out and, and with former Chief Frye and now Chief Hardy, those relationships continue and not just with the Sheriff's Department, but also with other local municipal law enforcement agencies. Our Safe and Healthy Schools Committee is made up of representatives of the Sheriff's Department, our, our schools, the Moore County Health Department, First Health. That committee meets quarterly and in the past, that group has worked together to come up with ideas and trainings for things that we have done and some of that that I'll, I'll highlight shortly. Very appreciative of Moore County Public Safety. Scott Brooks has been a part of that committee for a long time and have worked closely with Scott on some grant opportunities to provide some training that I'll highlight in a few moments. The Say Something Anonymous Reporting System is a, is a, all school districts in the state. Prior to having this, Moore County Schools has always had a, an anonymous reporting hotline. It used to be a phone number and a, and a text number. The state a couple of years ago started to require that all school districts have, have this kind of system, but the criteria that they, that they attached to that was, I went far beyond what we were doing with just a phone line and a text. So the majority of school districts in the state do use SSARS, as do we. So, you know, this system allows anyone to make an anonymous report of a threat to school safety and it could be any kind of, you know, that could be, you know, a threat of mass violence. It could be just wanting to make sure that maybe there's a potential for self, self-harm of a student and a friend realizes that, they can call and make that report. They can do it online, they can, it's a phone call, it could be a text, they can go online and submit and it's a, it's a system that's monitored 24 hours a day in a, in a national call center where crisis counselors are on hand to talk to the person and then alert the school as necessary depending on what the, the potential threat might be. So that, that has worked well over the last couple of years.
Dr. Powers, just one question. With, with regard to your comment regarding the, some of the confidential nature of the school emergency response plans, at what level is, is that information communicated? Is that a part of Safe and Healthy Schools Committee or is that at the SRO level or at what point, who's aware and at what point does it stop as far as that information you were referring to that's confidential?
Correct. We do have some, some conversations. I'll be honest, Safe and Healthy Schools Committee is, there are some conversations around that. They've reviewed our, our safety plan, so they do know some of those things, but yeah. Certainly our school police officers, our school staff, there are cer, there are certain things that we, that we do, that we have available in schools that is just not public.
It's not privy to the public?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I, you know, I saw that, I saw this statement in the superintendent's school board update and the phrase, "There's other classified," that's not the right word, "confidential plans" in our, in our school security plans. You know, without divulging a whole lot, I hope the public isn't expecting some grand response plan for some tragedy because I've reviewed those plans and I just don't see that in there. I, I see a bunch of bureaucratic administrative stuff, but as far as concrete, you know, we're going to stop an active shooter, that stuff just isn't in there. So we just need to make sure that the, that the public isn't being misled that there's some big grandiose plans that we're not privy to that would stop some sort of horrible tragedy in Moore County schools.
And I'm referring more to, to measures rather than plans. There are measures that we have in place that we, we're not, we don't want to share.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, we got to talk around, but you know, it's not this big, great, anyway, you know, it's difficult to talk about because they are confidential, but there's just not this big grandiose comprehensive plan that's going to save the day.
And, yeah, you know, we do have the CERT plans that the school board, you know, reviews and approves annually, you know, our school specific plans for just for like who's responsible and who's managing, you know? Those kind of things. We do also have a, a district, a district-wide emergency preparedness crisis response plan that is very, very comprehensive that we also update annually as well. But that's not one of the plans that is required to come to the board for approval, but it's there for your review if you ever want to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment too. We do, as far as I'm concerned, knowing what's in our plans, we do have plans that would prevent it some of the school problems that others have had, because we do have plans that would stop those, what I've seen happen in schools.
Thank you. Dr. Powers?
Yes ma'am.
Is this the time to ask questions or?
Well, I just wanted to.
I don't want to interrupt. I'll wait till the end.
Yeah, let's wait till he gets through the end.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, so some additional, additional information I can share. Act the Defender, the school safety app that we've had in place and use now, this has been the third year with that. So every staff member who wishes to have it, and pretty much 99% of our staff members do, have an app on their phone which allows them to basically set off an alarm. members do, have an app on their phone which allows them to basically set off an alarm and, and call a lockdown from anywhere on campus. So it's not a matter of, you know, a teacher gets out of the car in the parking lot and they see someone walking across the parking lot with a gun headed toward the school. It's going to be, you know, what is that teacher supposed to do? You know, that they can try to make the phone call real quick to say, but somebody's got to initiate a lockdown as quickly as possible, right? Because we know, you know, the more, the more quickly people get behind locked doors and can secure themselves, the, the less chance of, of greater tragedy. So this app allows that. That teacher could pull the phone out, open their Active Defender app, hit a button, and immediately everyone else's phone will go off alarm to say lockdown and also set off the campus emergency alert system that I'm going to talk about in just a second. But that, that the Defender app is, I think it's a great, it's a great tool for us to have in the, in the fact that it does allow anybody to do it from anywhere on campus. And then it's also a communication tool as well because through the app, you know, if you're in a lockdown situation, messages can be sent. The administrator can message teachers, teachers can message the administrator. They can also indicate through their app whether there's an emergency in their classroom or not. You know, in the past, you might remember we used red and green cards to put out underneath the door and we would meet with, we would meet with teachers and, you know, when we're doing, you know, the, the debrief after exercises and those kinds of things, I would always hear from teachers that that just made them very nervous, that putting that card out just signals that there's somebody inside the classroom. And so this app allows us to do that and have that information without actually having to put a card out and it can be seen on the phone by the school administrators and the school police. And so it's a, it's a great resource.
Dr. Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the Active Defender app the one that was developed by a local company?
It is. Jim Boy. Yes, he, yes. We, we, I was talking to Jim one.
Dr. Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just also going to add to, and correct me if I'm wrong, this app also lets you take roll call, correct?
There is, there is a portion of the app that had just been updated to allow for a teacher to account for students while, while in the application itself.
Perfect.
The, the other piece of that, yeah, in talking with Jim, Jim was actually coming to be a part of one of our helping safety schools committee meetings to talk about something else. And we started talking about this and he said, you know what, I think I could, I think I could build something like that. And he did. And it's turned into, yeah, it's, yeah, it started, started here. So the campus emergency alert systems is a, basically something else that we figured out. And this was also through one of the, through the functional safety exercises that we held on each campus that I'll talk more about in a moment as well. We, we learned as we did those exercises and had outside agencies on campus and we did them, we did the drills with staff after school. We figured out that when you call a lockdown with just using your intercom system or the radios, that you couldn't, you couldn't hear it from everywhere on campus. So for example, at Union Pines, you know, if you've got a, a team that perhaps is out on one of the fields, they, they, they may not hear the announcement. The last thing we want is somebody coming back into a situation where it's, it's dangerous. So we worked, secured one of the state safety equipment grants, worked with technology and Mr. Eklund, and we now have systems on every campus that when a lockdown is set, a siren goes off very loud. You hear it from anywhere on campus and it actually, it actually speaks as well. It talks and says, you know, it says lockdown, secure yourself behind a locked door, and it keeps repeating it. And then it also says it in Spanish. So that's a, that's a very positive thing. Monitoring of electronic systems, we have some, some processes in place for being able to do that to, for, for protection. Mini towers on, on campuses without reliable cell service as well. So technology has worked to, to get some systems in place to help with cell signals on, on some campuses. We all have, also have a system in place that if there were ever to be a crisis on one of our campuses where we know in that situation, everybody's going to be on the phone at the same time. And there's the potential for our first responders not to be able to have the communication capability that they would need. Kent has also worked to, to have a system in place that guarantees our Moore County Schools Police and first responders will have cell usage. It'll kick others off so that first responders are guaranteed cell service. We have improved video surveillance on our cameras, on our campuses. That's through some grant funding as well. We applied for COPS Stop School Violence funding and had received that over a couple of years. That allowed us to really improve some failing video surveillance camera systems in places, replace some cameras, upgrade old equipment, which has been great. And then also every campus now has the doorbell, doorbell video and the front doors obviously are locked in a FOB system so that we're limiting access to our campuses. Now in addition to that, you know, all doors should be locked, you know, as, as, as much as possible. You know, it's a challenge on some of our campuses because they're so open. There's so many multiple buildings. Obviously if we could, we'd love to have, you know, it's, you know, everything's under one roof and there's a main access point and unfortunately it's not like that, but as best we can, we try to limit that through those, through the FOB system. And I'll also share, you know, we've also, and John and his team, you know, worked to, to also build walls to create vestibules in some of our school entrances. So when, so when you get through the front doors, it's not just automatic that you can just venture out into the school. You've got, you're then directed through the office, which is also another, a good improvement that was made. So I wanted to share a little, a little information about some of the training and I've alluded to, to some of this so far. So this training has taken place over the last several years, threat risk assessment training. All of our specialized instructional support personnel, which includes counselors, social workers, psychologists, and our Moore County Schools Police Officers have received threat risk assessment training. And from this training, we standardized the threat assessment process and a document was developed and it's now utilized. So when we have a situation where a student says something that's concerning or behaviors are concerning, we can have, we have a, a way, a protocol to do a threat assessment on that child and to determine what, what level, is it, is it a, is it a low level, is it a medium level, is it a high level? And then based on that, we can take action to talk with their parents, to get them some, some help from, from an outside provider if needed and, and move from there. So we've had that training. The Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, also known as CSERS. This is a tool that assesses the severity of the potential for self, self harm and suicide. So all of our specialized instructional support personnel and our school nurses have been trained on the use of this scale. It's also the same scale that's used by Sand Hills Peds. And whenever we have a student that is demonstrating suicidal ideation, this scale is used to determine what the level of, of risk is for that child. And then again, able to contact parents and get them help with the doctor if needed. Prepare School Safety and Crisis Preparedness Training. We participated in workshop two of that. That workshop two is focusing on managing a crisis and recovery. Again, that was thus done for specialized instructional support personnel representing all campuses. And we kind of skipped workshop one related to that because it was more about crisis plans, teams, assignments, procedures, those things and things that we already had in place. Resources for Resilience Training, that has occurred. We have several schools that have trained their whole staff, Aberdeen Elementary, CLC, and then select staff from other schools as well. We had over 150 staff members that were trained in this. And again, it, it, this training is to help children who may have experienced trauma. You know, we have a lot of children who have childhood trauma, you know, things aren't, maybe some issues at home and different things that are going on. And it's a train that helps teachers to help students to, to learn to manage that and to cope and gives them some, some things that they can do physically to help, to help cope with that and over, and overcome it. So then two of the things that I mentioned before when I was talking about the Safe and the Help, the Safe and Healthy Schools Committee, our active shooter tabletop exercises and the functional safety exercises that we held came about through conversations through that committee and working with Public Safety here in Moore County and Scott Brooks. Scott helped us, we collaboratively worked on a grant to get the funds to be able to do both those things. The active shooter tabletop exercises were held by area. So we had one in, had one in Area One, one in Area Two, and then two in Area Three just because of the size. But basically what, what that was, was we hired a vendor that presented an actual shooter scenario. Each school's cert team was a part of this. Our Moore County Schools Police Officers were a part of this. The local outside agencies for the areas were a part of this. So local police, fire, EMS, they all came and participated as a part of it.
When was this?
That was.
I can help you. Per the March meeting, that was in 2017. That was five years ago.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sharing things that have been done over the past five years and I think I stated that at the beginning. Yeah. The next year following that, so if that was 17, 18 school year, then 18, 19, we had the functional safety exercises on every campus. Again, collaboratively got some grant funds to do that. You know, I mentioned that, again, outside agencies were there involved as well, worked closely with Scott and Public Safety on that. And we got some really good feedback and informations and, and things that we were able to use that, that we've done since then, like Active Defender, like the campus emergency alert systems, that, that came from that. So we're going to talk about now a little training related to our Moore County Schools Police. And Rodney's going to take over in just a minute and share some additional information. But I did want to point out just a couple of things on this slide before Rodney takes it. Just, just for your information, you know, per DPI and as well as, as per our actual Moore County Schools Board, School Board Policy, there's a requirement that an SRO who is hired should have a minimum of three years of law enforcement experience. The one, the one thing I wanted to just point out here and, and then I'll let Rodney take it, is the active shooter simulation training at Sammercand is, and I've mentioned this before, I believe, it, it is truly state of the art. It's, it's, it's about as, as real a simulation as you can, as you can get. It's a, it's an almost 360 degree screen where you're having to, to, you're having to keep up with your right, your left, what's in front of you. There's actually, there's a, there's a trainer that, that runs it and that it's not always the same. They control what happens as a part of the simulation through the computer that he's doing. Officers wear a, a kind of a shocker, a buzzer on their belt. You could, as they shoot, they can see where their, where their shots go. If they're shot, they, they feel that through the buzzer on their belt. It, it's very, very intense, realistic vibrations, different things happening. But the, the one thing that I think that, that really sets apart what we're able to have here is that they worked with us to actually video our, our three high schools, Pinecrest, Union Pines and Northmore, so that as you go through the simulation, you're, you can actually walk the halls of Pinecrest or you're walking the halls of Northmore. And when these, when these things happen as a part of the simulation, it's happening there like you're, like you're in the school. We had, you know, we were doing, I, I've been at twice myself with officers out there during that training. We have not done that training since COVID. So 2019, 20 was the last time that we were out doing that. But that is a part of the, the plan moving forward, that that will be at least annual, at least once annually, if not twice. And we do now know that Sand Hills has also gotten a simulator, the same type of simulator. So it gives us another option to have that for training as well. So Chief Hardy, if you don't mind, you can.
Before we transition, Dr. Powers, and yes, you got all excited about the Sammercand simulator last March, we talked about this. But was Sammercand closed to training during the two-year COVID lockdowns?
I'll be honest, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not saying that it was, you know, just COVID changed a lot. It did at the time. So, and can't do anything, can't go backwards, but we can move forward and that's our plan. So.
What, what is our scheduled time at Sammercand?
We have it coming up in August.
Okay, so it's very, very shortly.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
That's my point.
If you can go to the next slide.
You want to cover?
I can.
Get those couple of, oh. Yeah, get those, the annual mandatory.
We have mandatory firearms training where we have to facilitate daytime and nighttime qualification and special weapons qualifications coming up in June. The nighttime, we're going to defer to August to, because it gets dark so late. So we'll defer that to August and then we'll go back and do that again. However, in, we also required to have the seated trainings and face, and, and virtual trainings that we have to have every year. Most of the virtual trainings are completed, they will be completed by the July, end of July. The vert, the mandatory face, face trainings will be completed in August by the time we come back. This is the training plan that I, that has been created for both annual and additional training and where we'll be taking this training, as well as a estimated completion time and whether or not it's going to be reoccurring annually. We're going to be doing all, of course, all of our mandatory online courses are annually and they're done through the North Carolina Justice Academy. The annual mandatory face to faces, we will do them at a, to be determined locations, but all of that is used through the North Carolina Justice Academy. And those are reoccurring. I would like to add this year a Stop the Bleed training and that would be something that's in additional and it is planned. The date is to be determined however, because I have to find an instructor to do that. And it'll be incorporated into one of our times to be in school. We're also going to have active simulator training through Sand Hills Community College on their simulator in July and August, as well as simulator training at North Carolina Department of Public Safety at Sammercand in July and August. And then we will have rapid deployment training as a to be determined. And the reason is, is because I'm going to set that up jointly with another agency. And hopefully we'll be using our campuses. The standard reunification, that's training for re, just putting everybody back together again after a critical incident.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to share more about that.
But that's my training plan for this year, ladies and gentlemen.
Does Tom Bolins charge us to use trigger time?
I don't know what he charges. I, I have no idea.
Do we, do we, are we paying to use trigger time?
I, I do not know that, sir. His brother is one of our officers. I, I do not know that, sir. His brother is, uh, one of our officers.
Okay, so I, I suffice that to say it's free, then?
I, I don't know that for a fact. I can't say, speak to that.
Because, I mean, we have the LEO range down the road. That would be free.
You wanna get through this?
Okay, so, uh, just also wanted to share, you know, we talked about that, uh, you know, ideally, uh, we would love to have a police officer on every campus to provide, uh, you know, for, for maximum safety and security. Uh, so wanted to just provide a breakdown of what, uh, a Moore County Schools Police Officer costs. So this is the a- the average annual cost, sal- of salary and benefits. So ten-month employee would be sixty thousand dollars, eleven-month, sixty-five thousand, and twelve-month, uh, seventy thousand. Uh, so currently, uh, the overall approximate cost for salary and benefits for our Moore County Schools Police Force is approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, in order to add nine additional officers, uh, salary and benefits would cost approximately, uh, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, in addition to salary and benefits, the annual budget, uh, for the, our Moore County Schools Police, you know, to include things such as gas, materials, supplies, training, et cetera, is approximately forty thousand. Uh, that does not, uh, include, you know, periodic, uh, replacement or addition of, uh, vehicles. So we did purchase, uh, another police vehicle, uh, this year, uh, for twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Seth, can you just repeat how much, I, I wrote down the five hundred and forty thousand. How many, um, more police officers was that for?
Nine.
Nine, thank you so much.
So, uh, also wanted to share...
Let me, let me ask one question. Is that simply for one police officer per school, or is, are you talking about s- extra spares? In other words, something tells me if you have twenty-three police officers in twenty-three schools, you're not gonna have them all covered at all times. But, but which one is it? Do you understand the question?
Yeah, if we, that would get, nine additional officers would give us twenty-two officers to cover twenty-two schools.
For twenty-two schools, so that still wouldn't cover all the schools all the time. It would do most of the schools most of the time, I assume, right?
Well, we do have multiple, we do have multiple officers at Pinecrest, at, at Union Pine.
That's what I'm talking about. And so, for instance, if from time to time you have an officer who comes down to the central office, or a, an officer, is that include peatney?
It, it does include peatney. Uh, so, yeah, and we would, you're exactly right. That would, our desire would be to have that. So when you think about the fact that we do have multiple officers at, at, at least a couple of our schools, uh, yeah, it, it would require, uh, yeah, possibly more than nine.
Okay, all right, just, just wanna, there's a, I wanna find the money for it, basically, uh, somehow, some way. Is that right, Dr. Leclerc?
Yes, sir.
But, uh, but, but I just wanna make sure what we're talking about.
That, and that's our ultimate goal. Ultimate goal would be to have at least one officer at every school, all the time. Other initiatives, uh, just, uh, you know, we are focusing on school culture, you know, trying to do things that, uh, you know, to, you know, one way to keep the school safe is, you know, to keep people, keep students, you know, happy, connected, enjoying school, uh, enjoying their, their teachers, enjoying that experience. So we, we have focused on the maintenance and expansion of PBIS, the maintenance and expansion of capturing kids' hearts, which we've discussed earlier. Also related to, uh, mental and behavioral health, uh, we do have a behavioral health intervention team made up of three, uh, clinically licensed social workers, uh, who can support, uh, the behavioral health needs, uh, severe behavioral health needs of some of our students. They're able to work with them, uh, and kind of build a bridge to get them to, uh, outside resources where they can get the help that they need. This is not ongoing, it's temporary. Uh, although they're based at three of our, uh, three of our, uh, schools with, with a lot of need, uh, they're available to go out and support at any school if there's a, a significant behavioral health crisis at that school of a student. Uh, youth mental health first aid training. We've had, uh, had a team from each school trained, uh, this training teacher staff to recognize signs of mental health concerns and to support students by connecting them with the appropriate school-based mental health professional. So again, uh, you know, just awareness of teachers to recognize, uh, when students may be in a mental health crisis and then work to get them the support that they need, whether that be at school, well, initially at school, and then that person working to get them, uh, help outside of school if, if necessary. And then other initiatives, uh, the standard reunification method, SRM training that, that Chief mentioned. This is something, you know, when we talked about prior to, uh, you know, COVID kind of, uh, putting some things on hold, you know, we had the, the first year, we had the, uh, the active shooter tabletop scenarios. The following year, we had the functional safety exercises. Our plan with, uh, with public safety and with Scott was that we would, our next step would be to, uh, work on how we would reunify. And we, we felt, we felt good about where we were in terms of being prepared and what we would do during the crisis, but then afterwards, in terms of re-unifying, we did not feel as good about those, uh, those plans. So again, we worked together, uh, shared information, and we, we landed on the I Love You Guys Foundation, who has, uh, developed this standard reunification method. We have put together kits for each school, two large boxes, uh, that, uh, have the, have all of the supplies and materials that would be needed, as well as, uh, individual notebooks, uh, that assign responsibilities during, uh, a reunification that would be needed. So we're at a point, those are all, those are developed, they're ready, uh, so we'll be providing that training. We have a, a trainer coming on August eighteenth, and there'll be a team from each school that will come, receive that training, go back, uh, share with their staffs, train their staffs, and then they'll take their kits home with them that day. So if there's ever a need, uh, we're prepared, and, and they're there. As a part of that training, uh, all of our Moore County Schools Police will also be a part of that, uh, as well as other, again, outside agencies will be invited, uh, and, and we'll see how many we have that, that. I, I know we'll have people from Public Safety there, but we'll see how many of the other agencies as well might wanna participate. And, and finally, I'm gonna let Rodney again, I'm gonna turn it back over to Chief and let him, uh, also talk about, uh, some equipment needs of the police that had been, uh, uh, we were working on and we're planning to share.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. One of the things that came to light during the, what I was thinking about after Texas was the responding officers and how close some of our schools are together and the deployment and response of what my backup officer would be for, uh, situation occurring at schools. Currently, right now, um, not all of my personnel have long weapons available to them. And that would be an incredible, um, safety addition for the responding officers, not the initial officer. The initial officer will be engaging with what they're wearing. The sa- but responding officers coming into the school will be responding with long, long weapons. So I would like to, uh, add long weapons to every officer's availability.
When you say long weapons, are you talking about something like an AR-15, or are you talking about something different?
A rifle.
Just a rifle?
Yes, sir. The, of course, I was talking about the stop-the-bleed training. There's kits that we can have that, um, my officers can have there also. And those kits are pre-packed. I've priced them at seventy dollars per, per unit, and to get fifteen of them would be a thousand dollars. This is something that hasn't been, uh, looked at before. Also, I would like to purchase three ballistic shields to be placed, um, in three, in three schools in the event that we have to use those shields to evacuate wounded or to cover for the evacuation of students, or to re- retrieve an officer or another person who's injured. And those would be strategically placed at the, um, at the high schools, and then they, that's the cost associated with them. And of course, there's a training caveat to all that also, about movement and, uh, cover with that. The next thing would be to purchase additional walkthrough metal detectors. We have a unit right now at one of our high schools that is failing, um, and we can't seem to get it to work. The company, um, when I contacted them, they said that, um, if we didn't have an extended warranty, then we, we, we were out. So what I would like to do is to purchase at least one stand-up walkthrough metal detector to supplement the one who's, that is, um, fouling. And then possibly look at adding another one to, um, have either in, as a standalone that we could use as a backup, should one of those fail, or use in another location and keep in the trailer for deployment.
So we do, we do think that we can, uh, the things on this list, a- as we look ahead next year to next year's budget and the, you know, the budget for the Police Department, uh, between that and, you know, possibly some, possibly some impact aid funds, we feel like we could probably cover and, and purchase these things. So that's where we're, that's what we'll be looking to, uh, to do. One, one final thing to share before we open it up for questions and discussion, just wanted to, to also share. Mr. Hensley, you had asked about, uh, charges and reporting of those and that, and so I wanted to, to share. Uh, you know, we do continue to explore how we can do that. Uh, we, we do plan to continue to, to share data on charges quarterly when we share, uh, student discipline data. Uh, however, we just have to consider how we do that and that we, we, we aren't able to share students' names because it is protected under FERPA, uh, as an educational record. Uh, but, you know, a- as far as sharing that data and, uh, other related information outside of names and outside of anything that would be personally identifiable that might get us into some trouble, uh, you know, we'll certainly continue to look to do that.
Thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions. First, um, do, do we have any areas today, um, that are, that we have deficiencies identified, um, to where we are not within our legal requirements of, um, SROs and, and our officers? Based upon our guidelines from the state and what we have to have, do we have any deficits that we have not met?
No, ma'am, not to my knowledge. I know there was an email over the, over the, the course of the weekend about it, that state required plans.
Right, right.
But I'll be very honest, and that information related to that's been very poorly communicated. So we, we have done everything that we have known we were supposed to do in terms of planning and sharing those plans.
Okay, okay. Uh, my next question, with reference back to your Defender app.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, uh, every person, every teacher or every employee within school, do they have that app, or, or do they not have that app?
If you, if you have a cell phone, you have the ability to have it, but of course, it's, th- those are personal cell phones, so they have to choose whether they do it or not. And I can tell you, I, upwards of, and again, I'm guessing here, but absolutely more than ninety-five percent of our staff have put that on their phones.
And is that all, um, not just teachers, but custodians, cafeteria workers?
Everybody that has a phone has the opportunity to, to add it if they would like.
Okay, and, and so what happens, um, for, uh, let's say, for example, our Northern Moore area to where we know from time to time reception is not good, what, what is, what is the backup plan? Or what, what do they do to, if they see somebody coming that shouldn't be there? Is that, what is, how, how do they get to, uh, somebody to say, "I need help"?
That's a process, that's, you know, wh- in absence of the phone and the app, it would be like, like we did before, and how most places do it. It's, you know, somebody has to call the office, and they have to initiate our lockdown procedures.
Okay, okay.
Now, also, ma'am, the, the, there is a standalone computer that the office utilizes in addition to the Active Defender. They can set it off in the event somebody calls them or radios them, because they don't have telephonic access, then they could do that.
Um, and, and just, just a couple of comments that, that, um, that I would suggest, or, or one suggestion is, uh, I know you have, um, training, several different training dates, um, set for June, July, and August. Um, I would ask that you just add those, um, give us an update on your graph that you have with those particular items. You can just do it in our monthly updates, end of June, end of July, August, just so we can, um, just take a look at it and, and just make sure that, that we're having the follow-up training that we need. And my last comment before I open for our board members is, I know with the cultural training that the SROs, um, are experiencing is easily seen in their interactions with our students, whether it's at games or even on graduation day, uh, especially at Northmore. Um, I know that Jerry is, uh, Aponte is standing down at the end, at the beginning of the step. So when those students begin to walk up the steps, he's shaking hands and hugging, um, and saying something personal in their ear as, every year, as they're going up those steps. So you can see, um, how the relationship building between, between the SRO and the students, um, have been impacted over the years, so. Board members, have you got questions or comments? Mr. Levy?
I do. First, because I wanna, I wanna sort of zero in on the current crisis that we've seen at Uvalde, okay? And how that deals with Moore County Schools. First of all, uh, have, are any administrators regularly going through our schools to find out whether during class the doors are locked? In other words, my understanding is that there has never been a mass shooter who has actually breached a locked door, okay? And our doors should lock from the outside. And of course, it's a, it's a big deal when a teacher then has to get in, or an administrator has to get in, and they have to, well, use their keys to get into the class dur- even during session. And there's a tendency to unlock those doors. And yet, the locked door during class is the most, I, I, I think, Chief, you'll agree. It's one of the easiest, least expensive, and most effective ways of, of, of defending the students. Is there any regular, um, is there any regular audit going on of that?
Speaking on behalf of my staff, Mr. Levy?
Yes, sir.
All of my officers go around and routinely check doors as part of their walk around about the building. I, myself, used to make sure in the mornings that every door was locked and pulled and secured at every school that I was responsible for.
But I'm talking about during class?
During class.
Yeah.
Do we, we have to, sometimes if a child walks to the classroom, out of the classroom to go to the bathroom, then the door may not be closed all the way?
That's, but, but therein lies the problem, and that is the responsibility of the teacher, to make sure that that door is locked, is, is closed, and is automatically locked. And unfortunately, because I've substituted, I, I taught, uh, regularly, the poor child has to knock on the door to get in, and sometimes it's obnoxious, uh, because, uh, e- every kid wants to go out to the bathroom and then come in. In order to get back in, he's gotta knock on that door, but that is the security.
True, yeah.
That in and of itself is a security, excuse me. That in and of itself is a security, excuse me. And that, uh, that disturbing or obnoxiousness keeps our, keeps our students safe. So I'm talking about, from a standpoint of a board member, I intend to go through some of these schools and to, and to try to go in some of the doors, and hopefully I want to turn that, turn that door handle. Excuse me. And I want to make sure that that door is locked.
Yeah, and Mr. Levy, I absolutely a hundred percent agree. We've said that for many, many, many years. And we remind our principals of that. I know that they also remind staff, you know, we also tell them, you're exactly right, it's the best, it's the best defense, uh, that, that you can have initially. Uh, we also share them too, you know, and then you don't know when a lockdown's going to happen. You don't know when the need's going to occur, uh, and if your door is not locked, where are my keys? You know what, this is, I've got to do this in a hurry, you know, time, motor skills, you know?
Madam Chair, can we take a break?
Yes.
Let's just take five minutes. I'm going to pass, I'm going to step outside.
Yeah, take, I was, yeah.
I apologize to the board.
Let's take a five-minute break, okay?
But ask other questions.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, five-minute break. We're, we're going to resume and, and finish up our last item. Board members, did, did anyone else have questions, concerns? Mr. Hensley?
Yeah, um, yeah, I've got a few.
Okay.
This is absolutely, absolutely, as everyone knows, serious business. And I've never been more serious about anything in my life than the safety of our faculty and our staff and our students, right? Um, and I have to say that I'm a bit disappointed in, um, in what I've seen here, but let, let me start off by saying that, uh, Dr. Locklear started off by saying that, uh, safety, school safety and the safety of our faculty, staff, and students presumably is our top priority. Well, had that always been the case, then we wouldn't be here. And clearly, under the previous school board and the previous superintendent, that wasn't the case. And continuing into this school board, in fact, it took a new superintendent to get this addressed. And let me remind everybody that as presented in the March meeting, the last time our school resource officers had active shooter training was five years ago. And I can't find any record of our school resource officers ever receiving trauma medical training or, as Chief Hardy said, stop the bleeding training. And the fundamental primary mission of our school resource officers is to stop an active shooter and to protect, to protect our faculty, staff, and students by stopping an active shooter and rendering first aid in the aftermath, which is known as trauma medical. That's it. The primary function of our school resource officers is not to hug graduates at, on graduation day. In fact, that kind of brings up other questions as to whether our SROs are inappropriately close to our students, but that's, that's a philosophical discussion for another day. But my point is, is that, um, it hasn't always been the focus as demonstrated. If it was, then we would have ensured five years ago that our SROs were properly trained and equipped to do, deal with their primary mission. Um, and continuing to last month, I continue to see eight-plus school resource officers at our school board meetings. If we have eight school resource officers at a five-hour school board meeting, that is one-man week that those school resource officers are not protecting our faculty, staff, and students. So again, what I see is I see people paying lip service to that this is the most important thing when in fact it's not. I, I go to, you can go to the county commissioners meeting, meetings, and they have one very disinterested deputy uh, sitting down, down at the entrance, letting most people walk around the metal detector. But for some reason, we need to spend a man week of SROs keeping them away from our, protecting our faculty, staff, and students to protect school board meetings. So that is my opening comment. So, Dr. Locklear, I have a couple of questions for you. How many, so there's a hundred and seventeen school districts in North Carolina, I think. How many school districts in North Carolina have their own SRO force?
Two school districts, Moore County Schools and Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools.
Correct.
Out of the a hundred and fifteen school districts in the state.
Right, so there's a hundred and fifteen other school districts that do not have their own SROs. And I called a couple of school board members that I know at those other school districts. And interestingly enough, the two school districts that I talked to have a hundred percent SRO coverage in every single one of their schools all the time. They don't share SROs between schools. The sheriff's department provides SROs in every single school. And it goes back to what I talked about earlier today. If we spend a million dollars on SROs, we could hire fifteen teachers for that, and we could reduce class sizes. But for some reason, Moore County Schools has decided to take our educational money and duplicate what the sheriff department already does, and that is to provide public safety. So I, I guess my question is, and this is a rhetorical question, uh, Dr. Locklear, you can answer it if you would like to, Dr. Locklear, or you cannot, but let's say the sheriff's department, um, hired Seth, Dr. Powers, and said, I'm going to stand up a school. I'm going to stand up a high school, or I'm going to stand up a middle school. Do you think that would be the most efficient way for Moore County to, to, to do schools? I mean, do you think that, that, uh, the sheriff's department would be equally, equally, um, capable of running a public school as we would be?
Well, I believe that's probably a bit of a rhetorical question, but, but I would, I would say that I think we're, we're better prepared to operate schools than the sheriff's department or another entity.
Correct, because, because, you know, we have, you know, we have the lunch program people, and we have the academics people, and we have the analysts, and we have, we have all the things that you need, all the overhead that you need to do to run a highly effective, uh, school system. And there is a bit of overhead associated with that. Well, the sheriff's department has that for law enforcement. They have detectives, they have trainers, they have a chief, they have a deputy chief, they have people who file reports, they have an evidence room, they have all that overhead that you need to run a police department. And we have none of that. I mean, we have a chief, but where's our training officer? Where's our evidence room? Where's our detectives? Where's our intel people? Where's our, a- all that stuff that you need to run a police department? We, we don't have it. So I would say that we need to put law enforcement functions back where law enforcement belongs and take the educational money that we're currently spending on law enforcement and once again, hire more teachers. So, big philosophical discussion, but we are swimming against the tide. Us in Charlotte Mecklenburg are the only people who have gone down this path. And based upon the, the calls that I've made, we're the only ones that don't have a hundred percent SRO coverage in our schools. So anyway, I have some specific questions on what I saw today. Um, Chief Hardy, on putting together these training and equipment lists, did, did, uh, did Moore County Schools consult with other agencies or departments to come up with this list?
I'm the one that created the list, and no, sir, I did not.
Okay. Um, had you, um, had you considered putting body cameras on our SROs?
When we have, this was my rationale for not even requesting that. It was going to have to incorporate a lot more, um, IT support. It would incorporate a whole lot more expense, as well as it would also, when our campuses are already covered with video footage, then I, I saw it as a duplication of processes.
Okay, uh, you know, body cams go beyond, that, that's not really included in the safety. There's a lot of good reasons for officers to have body cameras. Uh, as I'm sure you know, a, a lot of people were clamoring for body cameras. Uh, and then when body cameras, um, became widespread throughout police departments in the United States, uh, it turns out that, you know, ninety-five plus percent of the time that there's an accusation against a police officer or a department, a body camera shows that the person making the accusations is incorrect or lied. And, and body cameras, ninety-five plus percent of the time, um, adjudica- that's not the right word. They, they, they prove that the officer behaved correctly, and they end up protecting the officer and the department, i.e. Moore County Schools, from liability, right? Now, there, obviously, there's a few, um, you know, um, very public instances where body cameras showed ugly things, but the vast, vast, ninety-five plus, probably ninety-eight plus percent of the time when body camera, uh, footage is reviewed, it ends up, um, freeing both the officer and the department from liability. So we need to consider putting body cameras on our SROs, especially since all the interactions with minors and things that could happen and accusations that could be made, we need to consider that. Uh, let's talk about the, uh, let's talk about the, um, the IFACS. Do you know the contents of the individual first aid kits that you're proposing?
I pulled them up on the internet, sir, and looked at them specifically to that.
So they have, I assume they have compression?
They have some type of, um, compression bandage, tourniquet, as well as having some form of powder that would clot.
Yeah, a hemostatic agent, like a QuickClot or whatnot. So, um, the issue with individual IFACS is, that treats one person. And IFACS are designed for the, to be used on the person who's wearing them, right? In a mass trauma event, you need twenty or thirty t- tourniquets, you need forty or fifty compression bandages. So what we really need is, we need trauma packs in each school. It, you know, individual officers need individual first aid kit that they could use either on themselves or one other person. But in a trauma, I, look, I, I do not want to, I do not want to have to ever, ever be in a position where I have to explain to a bereaved parent that, um, their child died because of lack of training or lack of equi- equipping, right? That, that would be a horrible situation to be in. So, um, on the list needs to be, uh, what they're called squad medical packs, that squad trauma packs, which have multiple tourniquets, multiple compression bandages, multiple, uh, hemostatic agents such as QuickClot Combat Oz. Are your officers satisfied with the concealable body armor that they use?
I think it depends on who you ask, to be honest with you, because there's all kinds of different styles and formats and stuff like that.
Yeah, does the department issue that? Okay, because if that's, I mean, there's a lot of really nice concealable body armor now. Um, that's almost like you're not wearing anything, or it's a lot better than it has been in the past. Um, So I'm glad to see that we're getting the training back on, on track. You know, obviously, um, in my opinion, it's inexcusable that we did not have trauma medical training or, uh, active shooter training in the last five years. I'm glad to see this getting back on track. Um, we just need to make sure that the equipment is correct and that we have the correct mentality. And we need officers in all of our schools, but again, Dr. Locklear and former board members, we are paying for that with education funds. We're taking military impact funds that could be going somewhere else, and we're paying for SROs when quite frankly, the county should be paying for that via the sheriff's department, like they're doing in a hundred and fifteen other school districts. So in, in my assessment, we're, we're, we're spending educational money and we're getting less than what the other school districts get provided to them free of charge from the, uh, from their local law enforcement agencies. So Madam Chair, that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, any, any other board members have comments?
I, I do have a few. Um, obviously, no matter what kind of restrictions or guidelines we put on our schools, such as having doors locked or alerting others, restrictions are only so good as the people who follow them. Having been a teacher, I, I can confess now- Having been a teacher, I can confess now, I propped my door open from time to time. It would get so cold in the room that we opened the door in order to warm it up. So, I would be guilty along those lines, and I know how it happens. So, I'm sure that at our opening meetings every year, and with new teacher orientations and whatnot, we are encouraging our teachers, the support staff, our custodial staff, whatever, to follow those rules. I know from my experience at visiting campuses, the doors have been locked, whether it's the principal that's taking me around or another teacher. I do like the new key fob systems that are in place at a few of the newer schools, the schools such as Pinecrest that have, well, and there's some others too, but like Pinecrest that have all the classrooms opening outside, require a lot of unlocking to go around. I know that it's a difficulty with the few hallways that are there, where bathrooms can only be accessed through the hallway for a child to get out of a locked classroom and get back around into a locked hallway to get to the bathroom. And, you know, as I said, it's only so good as the people who use it. So, when a child opens the door and lets someone in who's not supposed to be in there, it's, you know, it is what it is. We're dealing with humans here. I have to say, I disagree a little bit with some of the things Mr. Hensley said, but I think he stated that he thought, correct me on this one if I'm wrong, that the primary job of our SROs is to handle, what did you say?
It is, it is. So, the history of SROs, SROs were established after the Columbine shooting, more importantly, after Sandy Hook, to, they're there to protect our faculty, staff, and students from, well, they're there to protect them against active shooters and to deal with the aftermath by delivering trauma medicine.
Okay, I see that is one part of the, of the job of our SROs, but I think that it's so much bigger than just that, that it goes from, first of all, being proactive, not allowing those things to happen because you're, you're, our feet on the ground, our eyes out on the campuses, so that you know what is going on, whether it's as simple as breaking up a fight where two guys discovered they were after the same girl, or as a parent who's irate and not happy over the way a child has been, had discipline handed out, whatever. I see your job as so much more than just that. Obviously, after Columbine, things truly escalated, and responsibilities for anyone policing a school campus grew and grew exponentially. But I think there's just so much, much more. I'm proud of the fact that Moore County has its own school system, and I think one of the things that would have to be weighed before it could ever be eliminated is the fact that if this went back to our sheriff's department, our commissioners would very quickly eliminate what they would have considered the funding that supported our school SROs. So, there'd be a million dollars slashed off our budget very quickly. The schools wouldn't be gaining that million dollars to then hire more teachers. Because if the county had to all of a sudden fund 22 SROs to put one in each school, that funding would come away from us. I'm assuming maybe that Lee County is one of the school systems that Mr. Hensley said called, because he surveyed two systems. I know Lee County gets money from their county commissioners to fund their SROs, and they do have one at every school. But I would love to see us have more, obviously, to be able to put one at every school. The benefit of them being our Moore County School Police is they're never pulled to go do a funeral duty at some church down the way because they've got a direct traffic. They are solely dedicated to serving the students and staff of the Moore County Schools, and I find that to just be valuable. I'm sorry that Phillip is not here, because I know through talking with him on the policy committee, there's an extensive procedural manual, and I, that deals with our police department. And I know, Chief Hardy, that you've been in the process of updating that procedural manual, and I know Mr. Holmes had already taken the time to talk with you about it and to look through it. And there's a lot of valuable information in there. And I think that's one of the things people feel like is, is the meat of your responses. We see the safe school plans, and we see who's gonna be responsible for taking children to a safe spot, and who's gonna reunite them with their parents. But that's all critical as well. But that procedural guide that you have is what tells you what to do. What are our SROs doing if there's an active shooter situation, or any sort of crisis within our schools? And so, since we don't deal with your procedural manual, I think that's, that's the valuable resource that you have going for you. And I encourage you to continually update it and to add to it, which, like I say, I know that you are, and I know that Mr. Holmes and I had already talked about it and seen what was going on with it. So, you know, I'm really glad to see that. This can never be let go. We can never slide on our SROs. And I'm so glad to see, I didn't know about the active shooter trainings that you could do at Sammer Can, but it does sound like a most interesting and stimulating and thought-provoking situation for you to do. So, I'm really glad to see that you're pursuing going on with that, since it's been three years since you had done it.
Thank you, ma'am. It is truly about the only way to get your heart up as you would if you were as engaged, as close as about you can get.
The fact that they can actually do it at any of our three high schools and recreate our high schools is amazing.
Mr. Dennison, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am, I have some comments to make, too. As far as the SROs, we had at our board meeting, that happened because we had a threat against the schools. And I don't want to hear any talk about, you know, well, not a real threat. Well, that's what everybody says, till something happens at schools like happened, that we see on TV. 100% of our SRO coverage at schools would be great if we had the funding for it. Sheriff's Department would charge us, we went, I went through this eight, eight years ago or so, Sheriff's Department would charge us for the manpower that we use. So, we determined at that time that because of the other things our SROs do for our students, that probably most of these board members don't know that it was more important to keep our SROs than to go with the Sheriff's Department. And I have observed the safety and security, which, by the way, has always been my number one concern for schools, over the past 12 years, and I can guarantee you that there's significant progress made every year in how we, how we've improved in what we're doing. And I think personally, we're well, well above, ahead of the other, any other school district that I know. I did have one question. Do you, have you had, any of the officers had sniper training?
No, sir.
Okay. That might be a thought, too. I don't know, but. And I agree with Libby. When I've gone around to the schools and to go in a classroom, and I've never had a door that was not locked. The principal has always had to use the key to get in the classroom where I went. We had a few problems at Southern Pines Primary because of all the classrooms that opened to the outside, but I have never seen a door that has not been locked, unless it's a group taking a tour or something like that walking through. I'm really disappointed that we never had the Youth at Risk Behavior Survey. Parents were concerned about the questions we were asking, and they were pointed questions, but I guaran, excuse me. But I guarantee you that the questions in which were student identifiable would, the students would answer those questions when we asked them. The parents would probably never even ask them. The parents need to understand that everybody is not like they are. We have a bunch of parents who really have a problem being a parent, they have no training, some don't even have a high school diploma, some of the families are split. And how, I've been concerned because we may, we may have or have had students that really need help, that there's no way we would know about that, and a parent has no clue what might be going through their kid's head. Again, a lot of things we could do if we were funded. When North Carolina ranks 47th out of 50 states in public funding, and 49th in the percentage of income used for public education, you can see we've been very limited on the funding we've been able to receive. But I would like to see a lot more money put into our educating our students who are, who are not, not reaching grade level. As much as safety, too, safety is number one, but student achievement is really what we're here for. And we need to look at what's best for the students and not what's best for the taxpayers or the parents or the public or anybody else. Our concern, number one, is students, whether it be student safety or student education. That we need to put number one, and it has to be a primary consideration that we use when we make any decisions that we do make. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. Stacey, did you have comments?
Yes, ma'am. I was just gonna say, just coming from, you know, a military background and a law enforcement background, my father-in-law was a, you know, a police officer, and my brother-in-law, I see this, how essential it is to have you guys in every school. And I just wanted to let you know, Chief Hardy, I do support you 120%. And anything that, you know, we can do for you, you know, I'd be, I'd be willing to, to do what we need to do to get you what you need, especially, you know, what you were asking for on your list. So, that's all I had to say.
Yes, thank you very much. And I want to do, first of all, an advertisement for these halls, things, they are a cure. I'm not getting any money for that advertisement, but...
Tell them who taught you about that.
That was you, yes.
We kept feeding them to you at the meetings the last few months.
That's right. So, I appreciate that. I'm gonna try to get through this. And I assure everyone, while I'm coughing, I am not contagious. At any rate, I have seen those doors unlocked for various insubstantial reasons, and I'm not saying that, that it is for nefarious reasons that they remain unlocked or something like that. But I'm just saying that our administrators have to be much more diligent, especially knowing what we know now. And that is, in Uvalde, apparently, a door that didn't lock was the key for that gunman to get in. And certainly, it wasn't intentional when that happened. And certainly, the teacher even tried to, tried to close the door, but the door apparently didn't automatically lock. And so, we have to make sure of that. Secondly, especially goes to the chief, I know this is a very, very hard thing to ask, because none of us know what we'll do in a real, real crisis. But when there's an active shooter, there are two ways of handling it. And I think I've said this before, even in an earlier meeting. The first way is the way they do it in Los Angeles, or especially, the way they did it in Florida, in the nightclub shooting, and also, as I understand it, in that margin, that high school shooting. And that is to wait till you get special tactics people to come in and see what you could do, or in the case of Uvalde, they tried to get the guy on the phone. The other way is to do it the way they did it in Carthage, which I think still stands out as the outstanding response to a mass shooting in the United States. And it seems like none of the media seems to understand it. And that is, one officer seizes duty, goes in, and does the best that he can with what he can, but does it immediately. And maybe I know the answer to this, but I think the public needs to know, which is our preferred method of action?
Isolate and engage.
So, go, so go in. In other words, not wait for backup, go in and do the best you can with what you've got while you're getting other people to back you up later on.
That is correct.
Yeah. Because that's, I think the public needs to know that that's our commitment. And I would remind this board of an interview that I heard on the Uvalde case, and they interviewed the mayor of the city, and they said, "What about your police force? Why didn't your police force do this, that, or the other thing?" And the mayor looked and said, "It's not my police force." Said, "That police force belongs to the school district." And that police force, which was, apparently, it was one of those SROs, this is apparently one of those SRO districts, that is under, under the school board and under the superintendent, okay? So, it's not just theoretical, because what we do reflects on us personally. And the next thing that I want to point out is that we tend to want to emphasize the need for our SROs in our high schools. And certainly, that's where you got, you know, it's high schools and maybe junior highs or middle schools. And that's where we have the big fights and all this sort of stuff, and maybe we need SROs there. But Uvalde was an elementary school. Sandy Hook was an elementary school. When we had a scare here in Moore County not too long ago, wasn't that, am I incorrect? Was that at Westmore? Which is an elementary school. It's an elementary, elementary slash middle school, but it is an elementary school. So, with that, Dr. Locklear, when we're doing our budget this year, I believe we have to look at a lot of our budget backwards. And by that, I mean this. We've got certain priorities that we set, that we set out to do originally, and that was to raise our classified salary staff and to either decompress or compress, whatever the proper statement is, to make sure they get, they get more money. To lower class sizes in grades four through five. And I think one of our priorities should have been, and this is, hopefully, it's our foresight now, because we have the Uvalde thing, to look, I don't want to be able to look the chief in the eye when he says, "Well, I told you we needed these shields, and you didn't provide us with these shields." Or, "We needed a long gun," or nothing but a rifle, you know, "and you didn't provide us with a rifle." Or a tourniquet kit, and somebody bled out or something like that. We've gotta take these priorities and put them up front this year in our final budget. That's what I believe. And then I think we have to work backwards and say, "What are we gonna have to sacrifice?" And I hate to use the say, "We have to think about things like capturing kids' hearts." But we have to look at, there's, there's not a huge, there's so many things that we could do from, from mental health to whatever, to help kids. And I certainly know we can, but we only have a finite amount of money. And we have to set our priorities. And our priorities, number one, looks like it needs to be to lower class size and to add our, and to add money for our classified staff. But number, the next number that has to come up is, we've got to put, when I see $740,000, and that's gonna be the cost of putting an SRO in every school, I would say, well, maybe by sacrificing a couple of software programs, maybe we can do that. You know, maybe we can find that money somewhere. And that needs to be the creative stuff that when we do our final budget, because we don't know how much money the county commissioners are gonna give us, when we do our final budgeting, I'd like an explanation as to why any of those things were not included. And if we have to sacrifice some stuff, then maybe we gotta sacrifice some stuff, but we have to look at what our priorities are.
Any other comments, Mr. Hensley?
Yeah, I just have a request from, for Dr. Locklear. Dr. Locklear, I would like a copy of the Moore County School Police Desktop Procedures as they existed in December of '21, and I would like a copy of the Moore County School Police Desktop Procedures as they exist today.
You mean the operating procedures? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll, we'll provide that to you.
To be clear, December 21-
Correct.
And then today.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll provide that for the entire board, to the whole board, we'll see.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we have what you need, okay.
Is, let me make sure, so I don't mind you giving it to Mr. Hensley or something like that, but is that one of those, those secret things that nobody is supposed to know about?
There may be some policy-related issues that may not be public-
Okay.
-that could be part of that.
So, so those board members that get that-
And I would say, possibly, is that shared, Dr. Powers, would that be shared? Is, is that involved with the school's safety committee in any way, 'cause I know Stacy and Phillip are part of that, Safe and Healthy School?
You're talking about operating procedures?
Yeah, is that sep- that's separate and apart, okay.
But basically, what I'm saying is, certainly give it to Mr. Hensley-
Yeah, 'cause he's requesting it.
Because he's requesting it.
I hear it.
Don't give it to me, because I don't know what I would really do with it, unless somebody calls my attention to something particular, and it's not the kind of thing that I want looming around my house, where somebody might see it or look at it, you know?
Thank you.
But certainly give it to Mr. Hensley and whoever really requests.
My request to that is if it's classified, it probably doesn't need be floating around anyhow, so I don't know if it would be okay with David, but maybe he could just take a look at it versus having a hard copy, that way it's not floating around to other people.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to look at it today, I mean, I, I'm more than happy to look at a printed copy next Monday before our previous school board, I don't, I don't need it emailed to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, David.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure they exist, and I want, and I'm interested to see how extensive they are-
Okay.
-and how complete they are.
All right, we can, we can do that for next Monday, Dr. Locklear.
We can make it available to any board member who wants to look at it, I'm sure Chief Hardy and Dr. Powers can-
Okay.
-can make that available and, and, you know, make sure you have that information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Powers and, and Chief, we appreciate your time this afternoon and your information. At this time, we go into, Dr. Locklear, do you have any comments that you want to share?
No, ma'am, nothing to do.
Okay, board comments, Stacy, do you have any comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, David, you have?
I do, and two things, one is, parents and faculty have been very clear that they want smaller class size, however, one thing I've noticed about this board is this board appears to wanna spend money on anything and everything except teachers to reduce class sizes. In the military, there is the tooth-to-tail ratio, you know, where the teeth in the military would be the combat arms people, and the tail would be the administrative overhead, which is, to some degree, is necessary, and the military always wrestles with the tooth-to-tail ratio. Well, in education, the teeth are our teachers and our teachers assistants, and the tail would be the administrative overhead behind it, and what I have seen is whether it is moving SROs back to the Sheriff's Department to free up a million dollars, because regardless of what Ms. Carter said, it's not a foregone conclusion that the, that the county commissioners would take money back, for example, they're certainly not gonna take military aid money back that comes from the federal government that we currently spend on SROs, so whether it's that or a military liaison position, or as we discussed today, a capturing kids' hearts program, if everything is absolutely essential and we can't cut our tail, then we're never gonna grow our teeth. So, it's absolutely remarkable how people pay lip service to, "We need smaller class sizes, we need smaller class sizes," but nobody on this board is ever, under any circumstances, going to cut anything regardless of how unessential it is, such as may perhaps a military liaison position, or a capturing kid hearts program that we paid for for five years, but for some reason it's not ingrained in our culture yet, we can't possibly cut that to hire an additional teacher to reduce our class size and be more effective at teaching. So, that's my first point, and these are just notes that I made today, and the other thing that's become apparent is, we are never, ever, ever going to have effective safety in our schools as long as we have the current composition of this school board, and I will give you two examples. Ms. Carter says, and I quote, "We can never let this go, we can never let this slide." She's talking about the training and equipping of our SROs, but I would remind the public that Ms. Carter was the chair for two years of this school board, and before that was a member of the school board exactly during the time when the SROs received no active shooter training and no, and no trauma medical training, so for someone to make the comment, "We can never let this go, never let this slide," who in fact let it go and let it slide, demonstrates that we're never gonna get there with this board, but Ms. Carter is not the only example. I'll move on to Mr. Dennison. Mr. Dennison said, "Significant progresses have been made in our SROs year over year." He said that right after, over the last several months, we've demonstrated that our SROs have received no training, so I don't know how you can say we've had remark, significant progress year over year, when in fact, over the last five years, we've had a significant backslide. Mr. Dennison further said, "He can think of no better school district who do SROs and school protection better, when I just cited two school districts that have 100% SRO coverage." So, as long as we have school board members who bury their head in the sand and act like ostriches about school safety and SRO, our SRO program, we are never, ever, ever going to have an effective SRO program. Thank you.
Mr. Dennison?
My, my only comment is, we need to do what's best for our students, whatever it entails is best for our students, and as far as the comments I made, we'll let the public decide who, who, who they can trust most in the comments that are made, thank you.
Mr. Levy?
Yeah, first of all, I did not make my usual motion to have our meeting outside of the boardroom for next week, because I think as we go into the summer, especially as we're doing graduation, there'll be a little less interest, and I think the board, the, the local boardroom can accommodate that well, but I would hope that as we go into especially our August meeting, that we start to have these meetings once again out into the hinterland of, of places like Union Pines and Carthage, and even that place called Southern Pines, where Vass Lake View, and places like that, and I would be rather remiss, except that, and, and I've, I've got to do this, and I apologize, we, we have a new law firm called the Schwartz Law Firm, so let me say, just like they said in the movies, may the Schwatz be with you.
Ms. Carter?
Yes, thank you. I'm terribly sorry that this meeting, thanks to Mr. Hensley's attacks on Mr. Dennison and myself, diverted the main point of the meeting, which was to look at the safety provided by our Moore County Schools Police, and I want to again say thank you for the programming that you provide and for the safety that you do provide to our students and staff. I'll say again, we have no guarantee that the, the Moore County Commissioners wouldn't take back a million dollars, just as Mr. Hensley can't guarantee that they will not. He can continue to attack me in any way he cares, but he's simply trying to divert the attention from where it needs to be. I would like to put attention instead on our Moore County graduates this year, to wish them well as we approach graduation, Friday night at North Moore and Union Pines, Saturday morning at Pinecrest, maybe the weather be good and cool as we sit out on the football fields and watch these young people finish out what would be 13 good years. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and I would like to, that was gonna be a comment of mine with regard to finishing out a great school year at graduations. Also, don't lose sight, board members, if you have time availability this week, we have promotion ceremonies going on as well, we have one this evening that I plan to be at, up on the northern end, and so be sure to check your calendars, and, and if you can make it, let Ms. Parker know so that she can notify the schools. You should have information regarding graduations, as far as what time to show up, if you are planning to go to North Moore or Union Pines, and then Saturday morning is well outlined at Pinecrest, what time we need to show up, and the details are, have followed, so, just, just, it's gonna be a busy week, but it's gonna be a great week, so at this time-
Madam Chair, I move the meeting, be adjourned.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bye-bye, Stacy.